Dear Lord, as we begin this evening, may we bring open minds, mutual respect, and a shared commitment to shaping our city's future with wisdom and fairness. And bless our work tonight and all those who serve the safety, health, and well-being of our community. We ask this in your name. Amen.
Before we head into presentations, we will need to recess and move to our Housing Authority. With Councilman Bridgum absent, that will move us to Mayor Protam Joe Dovin as Vice Chair, leading the Housing Authority this evening.
Madam City Clerk, can we have roll call, please?
Commissioner Adesegi?
Here.
Commissioner Beckles?
Here.
Commissioner Klavenstein?
Here.
Commissioner Muñton?
Here.
Commissioner Philip Wynn?
Here.
Commissioner Tan Wynn?
Yes.
Commissioner Tran?
Here.
Vice Chair Dovin?
Present.
And Chair Bridgum is absent.
This is an open session of the Housing Authority. We're open for oral communications. At this time, does anybody wish to speak? Seeing none, we close the oral communications consent items. Will be acted on simultaneously with one motion unless separate discussion and/or action is requested by Commissioner. Does any Commissioner wish to pull an action item? Seeing none, we will receive and file item one, Housing Authority Status Report for October 2025.
Vice Chair Dovin, we're going to need to take a vote on the consent calendar.
Call for a vote on the consent calendar?
Do we have a?
A motion?
Yes, second it.
Commissioner Adesegi?
Yes.
Commissioner Beckles?
Yes.
Commissioner Klavenstein?
Yes.
Commissioner Muñton?
Yes.
Commissioner Philip Wynn?
Yes.
Commissioner Tan Wynn?
Yes.
Commissioner Tran?
Yes.
Vice Chair Dovin?
Yes.
Motion received, eight yes votes.
So we can receive and file the action items? Housing Authority Status Report for October 2025. Receive and file the minutes from the meeting held on October 28, 2025.
Yes, we've voted on the consent calendar. We can now move to the public hearings.
Public hearings. Motion to approve. Include adoption of each resolution unless otherwise stated. Do we have a motion? Oh, alright. I didn't want any public speaking. It's open for public communications. Please speak if you wish. Seeing none, we will close the public hearing. Are there any staff reports?
We do have Housing Manager Tiana here to provide a report.
Please.
Good evening, Vice Chairman and Housing Commissioner. The item before you tonight is the Revised Housing Authority Administrative Plan. The Department of Housing and Urban Development, HUD, requires Housing Authority that administer housing program to establish an administrative plan. The purpose of the plan is to ally policy for carrying out the Section 8 and Special Purpose voucher program in a manner consistent with HUD requirements and with local goals and objectives. The plan has undergone numerous updates and revision to accommodate regulatory changes in the program, to improve procedures, and to clarify discretionary policy. The revision of the December 2025 Administrative Plan reflects regulatory changes in administering the Section 8 voucher and emergency housing voucher program. The revised Administrative Plan also include procedural update in respond to changing in family income or household composition, moving process, tenant screening, and reexamination process. The public hearing was properly noticed on September 26, 2025. It is recommended that the Housing Authority Commissioner conduct the public hearing and approve the revised Administrative Plan. That concludes my report, and I'm available for any question.
Thank you for your report. At this time, we open up to the council members and mayor if anyone has questions for staff. Seeing none, we will close the member discussion.
Second, second.
Call for vote.
Commissioner Beckles?
Yes.
Commissioner Philip Wynn?
Yes.
Commissioner Tran?
Yes.
Commissioner Muñton?
Yes.
Commissioner Tan Wynn?
Yes.
Vice Chair Dovin?
Yes.
Commissioner Klavenstein?
Yes.
And Commissioner Adesegi?
Yes.
Motion received, eight yes votes.
Do we have any other matters?
No.
If not, we stand adjourned. The next regular meeting is scheduled for Tuesday, November 25, 2025, at 5:30 of the Housing Authority. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Now we're back to City Council business. That moves us into presentations. Item number one.
Item one this evening is the Community Spotlight in recognition of the 50th anniversary of AYSO Region 59. And Assistant City Manager Matt West will provide that presentation.
Thank you. This time I'd like to invite up to the podium Coach Easton, Assistant Coach Scholz, and the team. Come on up. For the past 50 years, AYSO Region 59 has given generations of children the opportunity to learn and grow and enjoy the game of soccer in a positive and supportive environment. Since its founding, the AYSO Region 59 has welcomed thousands of players from its youngest playground participants to U-19 athletes, encouraging teamwork, sportsmanship, and community spirit. AYSO Region 59 has proudly represented Garden Grove both locally and abroad, hosting foreign exchange players, sending a team to Germany, and competing in the Western States Championship every year. Beyond Saturday games, the organization brings families together through annual events such as Volunteer Appreciation Night and Family Fun Day, celebrating the volunteers and families who make it its success possible. For five decades, AYSO Region 59 has played an important role in the Garden Grove community, teaching not only soccer skills but also the values of dedication and teamwork. At this time, the mayor and city council would like to present AYSO Region 59 with the Crystal Award in recognition of their 50 years of outstanding service to the Garden Grove community. The City of Garden Grove thanks AYSO Region 59 for their continued commitment to building a stronger and more connected community through youth sports. Congratulations.
Presentation number two is the Community Spotlight in recognition of the 30th anniversary of the Main Street Weekly Car Show. And Assistant City Manager Matt West will provide that report.
Yes. Next, the Garden Grove City Council would like to recognize the historic Main Street Car Show, the longest-running Friday night car show in Orange County, as it celebrates 30 years of bringing the community together. And at this time, I'd like to invite up Jennifer Stewart, President of the Garden Grove Downtown Business Association, along with Diane Bane and Rod Sexton, the current operators of the historic Main Street Car Show. If you could come up to the podium, please. For three decades, the historic Main Street Car Show has remained a beloved Garden Grove tradition, welcoming residents, car enthusiasts, and visitors with weekly classic car displays, live music, and raffles. What began as a small gathering has grown into one of Garden Grove's most recognized community events. The historic Main Street Car Show is a community effort made possible by the dedication of countless volunteers, sponsors, and supporters who come together week after week to keep the Garden Grove tradition alive. Beyond the weekly shows, the historic Main Street Car Show gives back to the community through charitable events, including trunk or treat, the Golden Egg Hunt with the Easter Bunny, and the annual toy drive with Santa, held in partnership with the Kiwanis Club of Garden Grove and the Boys and Girls Club. We would also like to recognize Diane Bane and Rod Sexton, who have elevated the event through their hard work and creativity over the past seven years. Rod Hand Crafts eat show trophy from repurposed car parts, turning them into a one-of-a-kind works of art. And Diane leads efforts to organize special events and collaborations that bring the community together on historic Main Street. Additionally, their monthly tributes to local veterans made possible through the help of John Stella continue to honor and uplift those who have served. At this time, the mayor and the city council would like to present the Garden Grove Downtown Business Association and the operators of the historic Main Street Car Show with the Crystal Award in recognition of 30 years of outstanding service, dedication, and community partnership. Thank you for preserving this Garden Grove tradition and helping build a strong and connected community for generations to come.
Item number three is an update on Neighborhood Improvement Services, Housing, Homelessness Prevention, and Other Resources. Neighborhood Improvement Manager Monica Cova-Rubias is here to provide that report.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council Members. Tonight, I will be providing you with an overview of the various programs and services the city offers with use of the Department of Housing and Urban Development, or HUD, grant fund allocations, and details on how our residents can access these resources. The information I will be providing will be for fiscal year 2425, in order for you to be able to see the average number of individuals we are able to assist during an entire fiscal year. However, please note that our current fiscal year grant allocations are generally speaking close in range from year to year. During fiscal year 2425, the city received a total of $2,658,463. The breakdown by grant is as follows. We received $1,877,100 in community development block grant, or CDBG funds. These funds are to be used for the benefit of low and moderate income residents, for infrastructure projects, public services, or housing rehabilitation. In emergency solutions grant, or ESG funds, we received $162,656. These funds are to be used exclusively for homeless services. These services include prevention, shelter, rapid rehousing, outreach, and data collection, and $618,863 in Home Investment Partnership, or home funds. These funds are to be used for affordable housing production and rental assistance programs. Here's a more detailed list of the CDBG programs and the activities we fund, their designated budget, and the number of individuals assisted. Fair Housing Foundation, with a budget of $30,000, assisted 7,474 individuals. The Special Resource Team, with a budget of $113,962, had a total of 6,055 contacts. The Senior Center, with a budget of $147,603, was able to assist 668 individuals. Meals on Wheels, with a budget of $20,000, was able to serve 43,054 meals. The Monroe Street Rehab Project, with a budget of $270,189, impacted 3,100 individuals. The Home Repair Program, with a budget of $135,000, assisted 20 households. The Garden Grove Boost Program, with a budget of $100,000, was able to assist 12 individuals with home-based businesses. And under our Workforce Activation and Readiness Program, with a total budget of $84,159 between both of our service providers, we were able to assist 35 individuals. I would like to highlight a few of these programs and the services they offer. The Fair Housing Foundation is dedicated to addressing segregation and promoting integration across various protected classes. They offer a range of services, including landlord-tenant mediation, fair housing counseling, discrimination services, complaint resolution, education and training, public workshops and advocacy to further fair housing, and promote fair housing choices. Virtual workshops and walking clinics are held every week, and the next in-person meeting in Garden Grove will be held on December 1 at the H. Lewis Lake Senior Center at 9:00 a.m. The Special Resources Team provides outreach to homeless individuals. Their goal is to connect homeless individuals to the services and resources they need in order to get off the streets. Our SRT team was able to make contact with the homeless population 6,055 times, provide referrals 1,053 of those times, and have 67 successful street exits. The H. Lewis Lake Senior Center offers seniors 55 years and older a multitude of services and activities. These include classes, exercise, health and wellness, education, senior support programs, transportation, excursions, special events, and food security and nutrition. Their services provide essential companionship and care, helping older adults in our community feel connected, supported, valued, especially those without family and friends nearby. And the Meals on Wheels Program provides nutritious home-delivered and congregant meals to frail and homebound seniors. The program was able to assist 202 unduplicated seniors, 54 of those being homebound seniors, and 148 of those seniors being at the H. Lewis Lake Senior Center, with a total of 43,054 meals last year. If not for this program, any of these seniors would have limited or no access to nutritious meals and potentially go hungry. The next slide is a more detailed list of our ESG programs and activities. 211 Orange County has a budget of $4,880. They collect data for all individuals in Orange County seeking homeless services through their homeless management information system, HMIS, so that service providers can efficiently and effectively provide assistance to individuals in need. Anyone in the county who's in need of any type of homeless services can dial 211 and be connected to the appropriate service provider based on their specific needs. The remaining ESG service providers provide one or a combination of the following services: street outreach and engagement, case management, transportation to emergency health services, shelters, and other services, facilities, support services, counseling, crisis hotline, and economic self-sufficiency, and other life skills. VOALA was able to provide street outreach to 71 individuals with a budget of $46,000. Illumination Foundation, with a budget of $30,000, assisted 47 individuals. Interval House, with a budget of $21,000, assisted 23 individuals. And Mercy House, with a budget of $42,875, assisted 39 individuals. The home program activities include the HART program, which is a rapid rehousing and homeless prevention program. Services include short-term to medium-term rental assistance, housing coordination, security deposits, and other supportive services for homeless individuals or those at risk. Interval House was able to assist a total of 24 households, which amounts to 64 individuals with a budget of $250,000. Additionally, annually, we allocate a portion of our home funds to the production of affordable housing. Because of the high cost to produce affordable housing units, we typically have to allocate funds for several years in order to form a partnership with a developer for a viable affordable housing project. During fiscal year 2425, we allocated $306,978 to this endeavor. I'll quickly go over how our residents can access information to all of these programs. Anyone who logs on to our city's main webpage, ggcity.org, can type in Neighborhood Improvement on the search engine at the top right-hand corner. That will take them to the bottom right-hand page. If they click on that first link, Neighborhood Improvement Division, that takes them directly to our specific website. On the right-hand side of our webpage, you will see a list of all of the programs we offer with CDBG funds, home, and ESG. If they were to click on Community Development Block Grant, it'll take you to this page, which has icons for each of the programs we offer. If you click on a specific icon, like Fair Housing Foundation, it will take them straight to that program's website where they can find additional information for that program. If they do the same thing for Emergency Solutions Grant, you will again see icons to all of the programs that we offer with ESG funds. Our main webpage also has access to all of our affordable housing projects. Here we post flyers on projects that currently have vacant affordable units. We also have a map showing where all of our affordable housing projects are located within the city. If you click on any of the projects, you will see details for that specific project, just like we're showing here, Garden Grove Senior Village, and their management company information. Under View Details, it will list the project address, a contact phone number, and email address for that project. The city currently has a total of 1,211 affordable housing units. I'm now going to switch gears a bit to provide you information on HUD funds we receive for our Section 8 voucher program. During calendar year 2025, the city received an annual allocation of $48,170,609. This allocation provides funding for three types of vouchers. The Housing Choice Vouchers, which is a traditional Section 8 voucher for purposes of assisting low-income individuals secure affordable housing. This program received an allocation of $45,492,573, and has issued 2,210 vouchers. We also have two types of specialty vouchers. The Emergency Housing Voucher, which purpose is to alleviate the homeless crisis, received an allocation of $1,316,464, and currently assists 93 households. And the Main Street Vouchers, which are specific to non-elderly individuals with disabilities. At a budget of $1,948,821, we currently have 71 vouchers issued. That's a combined total of 2,374 vouchers managed by our Housing Authority. Some statistical data. 9% of our vouchers are currently assisting non-elderly, non-disabled households without children. 14% of our vouchers are assisting families with children, and 77% of our vouchers are issued to elderly disabled households. Here's some information on the average subsidy by household size. To give you an example, a fair market rent for a two-bedroom unit is $3,236 per month. The Housing Authority's average negotiated contract rent for a two-bedroom unit is $2,239 per month, and the average subsidy for a two-bedroom unit is $1,695 per month. Using this as an example, if we were to do a quick calculation and multiply our average subsidy of $1,695 per month times 12 months a year, times the total number of vouchers issued of $2,374, that would amount to over $48 million in rental assistance provided by the Garden Grove Housing Authority. This is the Housing Authority's main webpage. It would be the same process previously mentioned. Go to the city's main webpage, ggcity.org, type in Housing Authority on the search engine, and click on the first link that reads Housing Authority Division. It'll take you here, where you can access all of their information, including their address and direct phone number. In summary, with a total allocation of $50,829,228 in HUD funds, the city was able to assist a total of 22,575 individuals during fiscal year 2425. This is the average number of individuals we assist every year. That concludes my presentation, and myself and Tiana are available to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you so much for the robust presentation. I think it's wonderful to be able to share and highlight, really showcase, all that we're doing here within the City of Garden Grove with those HUD funds. I appreciate the presentation, so transparent and very robust. There's a lot to go over, and I think it's wonderful to be able to really highlight this for the community. I hope people that aren't here this evening can look into this information and really absorb all that we're doing. It's quite impressive. So thank you for putting this all together and preparing it and sharing it with us this evening. Thank you.
And if I may, Madam Mayor, members of the city council, the presentation made by Monica this evening highlights all of our federal dollars that are programmed within these activities. So the city receives nearly $50 million to address all these resources that are available to our community today.
Thank you. All right. Before we move into oral communication, I'm going to go out of order. We're going to take item 13, which is a Commission/Committee matter at this time.
Yes, item 13 is receive and file the Measure O Citizens Oversight Committee Annual Report for fiscal year 2024-25, and Committee Chair Steve Sanders will provide that report.
Coming through loud enough, just want to make sure. Okay. My name's Steve Sanders. I've been on the Measure O Committee since its inception in 2019. I'm the current Chair for Measure O. We've, since our last presentation here with you last year, we've met a couple of times, and I'm kind of going to go through this like I did last time. You've been provided a document, and I think it would take quite a while for me to read it, seven pages, and try to explain the graphs to you. But things I did want to highlight is that we have met twice on it. We have a variety of members from the community involved with this process, which is very important since the council had stated where the funds were going to be going when this measure was passed. When we meet, staff is very open. Their presentations are very clear. They are not bashful or hesitant to answer any questions about it. They provide the same sort of graphs and technical information that is provided in this seven-page document to you, indicating where the expenditures from that measure are being spent, and how they are meeting the obligation that was established when this committee was established by the city council and city staff. We have reviewed, and I guess the important part is, coming to page seven, is the Oversight Committee has reviewed all the audited financial data and budget information for the last fiscal years, and we do believe that they actually reflect and accurately reflect where the tax revenues are being spent, and that they are meeting the program requirements.
Mr. Sanders, did that conclude the report?
The report. The page is free.
We appreciate the condensed version. Thank you very much, Steve, for being here this evening to share that with us. I believe this is just a receive and file. Colleagues, are there any questions on this, or we'll receive and file it? Nope, okay. Do we need a motion? We still need a motion, okay. Do we have a motion then?
I'll move.
Okay, motion and a second. Call of the vote, please.
Motion received, six yes votes, with Councilmember Bridgum absent.
Great, thank you. All right, with that, we will go back to oral communication. I have quite a few pink cards, so I'm going to cue everybody up three at a time like we've been doing in previous meetings. So our first three speakers, first will be Lieutenant Colonel Hin Vu, followed by Anita Riley, and then Cassandra Amir.
Good evening, Mrs. Mayor, ST members of the City Council, and residents of the city of Garden Grove. Thank you so much for extending the invitation for me to attend the city's Veterans Recognition in honor of this year's Veterans Day. Gestures and actions like that make us feel really good in the defense and service to our nation. And second, I want to take this opportunity to, thanks to City Councilwoman Cindy Tran, to talk about why I'm here in uniform. So I'm going to address the city residents. I am the advisor with the Navy Recruiting Command here in Orange County, Southern California. What I do is always look for officers in the Navy Reserve. We always look for citizen sailors to work part-time in support of our Navy. And thanks to City Councilwoman Cindy Tran, who herself is a veteran, I got this opportunity to talk to you, to let you know that if you know any working adult children, siblings, friends, families, who are interested in serving our nation, in serving the Navy in a part-time capacity, then feel free to contact me. I'm going to leave my business card here, and City Councilwoman Tran also has my information. The reason is, the Navy needs people like you to be citizen sailors, meaning that you still have your full-time job at home, but on the weekend, or, you know, once a year you go serve the Navy. I myself was a veteran, I got out completely, and then I miss it so much, I put my uniform back on and have been in service for the last 10 years. But we need more young people to, to serve the Navy and serve our nation. And I know that the city of Garden Grove is such a patriotic city, you know, thanks to events like this, and I strongly believe that I can find a few good women and men in the city to serve the Navy. So, thank you for the opportunity to speak with you, and thank you, City Council, for allowing to speak to you.
Thank you, thank you for your service. Anita Riley?
Hello, I'm Anita Riley, and I've lived in Garden Grove for over 40 years, belong to King of Kings Lutheran Church, and there's so much, so much turmoil about the citizenship, the immigration, the legal. So I wanted to share with you that my church offers a citizenship class twice a week. We have one morning and one evening. And we've had quite a few people, if they have their, their green card, they're, they're almost there. And so many people get their green card, and then they don't go any farther. So we have classes that, we get them prepared for their citizenship test. We've had so many people get their citizenship, and I just hope that you will spread the word. We have room for a lot of people. We have retired teachers that are there helping people. We kind of walk them through the class. We get very excited when they get their citizenship. So, it's King of Kings Lutheran Church in Garden Grove. Thanks.
Thank you.
Can you guys hear me? I speak a little loudly. Okay. Good evening, Mayor, and members of the City Council. I'm here to talk about Agenda Item Number 20. A few months ago, Mayor Pro Tem Joe Dovin said, which, by the way, thank you so much for showing up tonight. I know last week you mentioned you were kind of on the fence, so thank you. He said, "We don't need to take sides. I'm tired of taking sides. Immigrants versus refugees versus non-immigrants versus illegal immigrants versus immigration enforcement, we don't have to take sides. We're all indigenous, one way or another." And I found that comment interesting, because tonight's vote on Item 20 is exactly that, a chance to not take sides, but to stand up for fairness, safety, and due process for everyone who calls Garden Grove home. My family has lived in Garden Grove since 1999. My parents came here to build a better life, and this city became our home. It's where my siblings grew up, where we went to school, and found community. Since the increase in federal law enforcement's activity earlier this year, I, along with many other residents, have found myself trying to support immigrants and impacted families in the ways that this council hasn't. People are scared, small businesses are struggling, and yet, it's community members who are doing the work to make others feel safe and informed. So if we truly don't have to take sides, as Mayor Pro Tem Joe Dovin said, then voting yes on this resolution should be the easiest decision you make tonight. Thank you.
I have a point of order from the Mayor Pro Tem. I'm going to let him speak, since he was personally acknowledged.
Thank you, and I appreciate you correctly quoting me. So as a preview to our vote, my vote anyway, we will vote out of courage, not out of fear. Thank you.
Kristi Gladys, Anthony Enriquez, and Deena Nguyen will be the next three speakers.
I live and work in Garden Grove. And the last City Council meeting was the first meeting I ever attended. I came because I thought I would just be here physically showing my support for what I thought would be wholeheartedly supported by the council, simply affirming that all our residents are welcomed in Garden Grove and deserving of basic human rights and dignities within the boundaries of our community. Just acknowledging that there's powers outside the city that we can't stop or prevent from harming or traumatizing our families, but offering resources to help people be informed and prepared for those encounters. I'm back tonight because I was a bit shocked and dismayed by the lackluster response from the council, because I believe that you all want to lean into what's on our website, that we have a vibrant, diverse community with deep hometown spirit and a progressive vision of the future. And wavering on if we're simply going to affirm that we show respect to all of our members and support our residents doesn't seem like a very hometown-spirity position. And it's not very progressive of Garden Grove to be one of the last areas in Orange County with a very large immigration population to not have spoken on this issue for its citizens. There should be no hesitancy in looking to the city to provide resources for its members. We heard so many young people, and I see a lot of them are back tonight, who came to speak for what they're looking for, for their future. And they're looking for a community where they will build their homes, their lives, invest in businesses, and want to be our future leaders in this community. And I think we should stand with them. And I think we should stand with all of our community members when we say that we don't want to lean into further isolating or traumatizing any of our people, and that the city can acknowledge that the fear people are experiencing is real and affects our city, its economy, and the community we build here. I hope we've all had time to reflect on all the points that were made at the last meeting and consider the needs of our city. I look to leadership to be a beacon of courage and hope for the community, particularly in a time when people are more fearful and suffering higher levels of indignity and interruptions in family safety and stability. We look to you not to save or protect us, but to stand with us, to show understanding and empathy, and to provide resources so people can prepare to protect and fight for themselves. We can acknowledge the fears are real and reasonable. Simply because people look different or speak differently doesn't mean that they deserve the targeting that they are receiving. We can commit to represent all our residents reaffirming practices we already have in place, like that our local law enforcement does not participate in federal immigration actions. And we could definitely find some space on our website, which already has a public safety section, a key initiative section, and a community services section, to add in resources for immigration and legal services and advocacy groups to meet this need of our community, which is actually an ongoing need, not just something that needs to be happening in this moment. Lastly, at the previous meeting, there was the question brought up by a number of members on council, like, what's the point? Why do we need this?
Ma'am, your time is up.
Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't, sorry about that. But if we did Google searches, and it was on our city website, then it would come up for local residents instead of from anywhere in the state.
Anthony Enriquez?
Good evening, Garden Grove City Council. My name is Anthony Enriquez, and I'm a Garden Grove District 2 resident. I'm here today to urge the council to vote yes on Agenda Item Number 20. I appreciate that it has kept important aspects, such as information on local resources and support. However, I can't ignore the redactions the resolution has undergone, from removing tangible, action-oriented language to removing statements that condemn recent immigration enforcement. It does seem that the city wants to appeal to its immigrant community, however, they can't seem to fully lean in. I hope in future discussions on supporting the large immigrant community in Garden Grove, that this council can make further commitments to aiding those affected by immigration enforcement. I would like to see the city work with local community organizations. I'd like to see the city call upon businesses to contribute to aiding our immigrant community, and I would like to see the city further discuss how to support our people being affected. I want this resolution to act not as an endpoint, but as a stepping stone to further, to further action.
Deena Nguyen?
Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, and council members. First of all, I want to start out by acknowledging our veterans and thanking them for their services, and one in particular who have served as our mayor of the city of Garden Grove, that is former mayor Bruce Broadwater. Thank you very much. I want to thank each and every council member for opening the dialogue and maintaining that dialogue with the public. I think that's a healthy dialogue. And I want to further commend the Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, and council members for being a good sport in opening the dialogues to others who are not living in the city of Garden Grove, and organizations who are not living in the city of Garden Grove. And you are opening your minds and to ideas of others, and the resident appreciate that. And I called you guys a good sports because for your, what you're doing, you're being criticized sometime very harshly, and I think the people who come here and enjoying that healthy dialogue should reconsider and make the criticism not as harsh, but more critical. I also wanted to mention that whether the Item 20 passes or not, I think we do need a page of information that is beneficial to our residents to get information, all-inclusive of all issues, including but not limited to services for seniors, services for the youth, and of course, for anyone who might need immigration. And I also believe that if the city was going to put out a website or information to the public, that the people who want to be on those websites should be vetted as a government-funded agency, so that we don't have to go through the process of verifying, and then layer it on being liable for non-funded, government-funded agencies. Each of the nonprofit, I think, have a good, I would say, they, they have a good intent to come and serve our city, even though they're not in our city. What I would suggest to each of these nonprofit is to present themselves separately and not as cohabitives, because they can't vouch for other nonprofit agencies. And each should come as their own, so that they can advertise, they can relate to the city, what their service is about, and their credibility and their reputation. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Aliyah Yusufi, Dwight Hu, and Karen Nguyen are my next three speakers.
My name is Aliyah Yusufi. I'm the Senior Policy and Advocacy Manager at the Council on American Islamic Relations, Greater LA Chapter, that serves the city of Garden Grove as part of its region. I also grew up in the city. I attended Orange Crescent School in Garden Grove from preschool to eighth grade, so have a strong connection to the city of Garden Grove. I want to thank each of you that voted to have this Item Number 20 brought forth today to hopefully have it approved. I just want to say that, you know, CARE is the largest Muslim civil rights organization in the country, and our office is the largest within the ecosystem of chapters that we have. But we're also the largest, one of the largest immigration legal service providers in Orange County. And I just want to highlight that, because sometimes that doesn't always translate because of our name. We do a lot of different things, and that is a really big part of what we do. We have a robust immigrant rights center that has over 20 staff, including six attorneys and support staff. And as part of what immigrant, our immigrant rights center does, is it provides a variety of services, including full scope representation, but we also do know your rights presentations. We do outreach, we do education, we do naturalization clinics. We accompany clients and, and community members who are scared when they're going in for their ICE check-ins or their immigration hearings. So we provide a lot of support through the community, and a lot of those folks are also residing in Garden Grove. So when we talk about the language in this resolution, about collaborating with local community organizations like CARE, those are the types of services that we provide, and I wanted to just make that, make you all aware of what those things, how those things take shape. We also help people with reunification of their families. We also help victims of human trafficking, serious crimes, and domestic violence. We also help people who are trying to seek asylum. So there's a whole labyrinth of immigration law that people that arrive in this country have to navigate, and it's very difficult to do that without somebody who is guiding them. And that's a lot of the time why people get trapped into an undocumented status, because it is really difficult to do that without the wherewithal and the knowledge. And so that's another reason why this landing page at the city of Garden Grove is really a critical step towards supporting immigrant communities in Garden Grove and beyond, because it's a trusted resource. There's a lot of people who get misinformed by the wrong people and the wrong places, and you can have a landing page that's housed in a vetted space, like the Garden Grove City Council, or city's website, is a way to combat that. So thank you.
Excuse me, I'm a little under the weather today. But good evening, Garden Grove City Council. My name is Dwight Hu. I'm a resident of Garden Grove District 1, and a community organizer at Vit Rice, based right on Garden Grove, right off Euclid, just 10 minutes down the street. And I'm here today to urge you all to vote yes on Agenda Item Number 20. So as we return to discuss this resolution once more, I wanted to reemphasize how young people in Little Saigon, in Garden Grove, are brave leaders in our community, who have been standing up for immigrants in our community here in Garden Grove, whether it's through local food drives to bring essential groceries to families impacted by increased immigration enforcement, or through sharing education and resources with friends and family. It continues to inspire us how courageous these young people have stepped up, especially during this year. They see the need in our community, and they're working to do their part. So last week, I actually joined one of our youth interns in their door-to-door canvassing, and we had this opportunity to talk to a young Vietnamese man at his home. And he talked to us how he would like to see his elected officials doing more to support immigrants at the local level. And he specifically talked about how he was aware that increased immigration enforcement was not just an issue for the Latine community, but for Asian-Americans as well. And he was glad to hear organizations, other young people, and hearing local electeds talk about ways to address these issues. And this is actually in Councilmember Philip Nguyen's district. And so last City Council meeting, I want to take a moment to thank our council members who supported this resolution. Thank you to council members Erstegi, Muny Ton, for your continued advocacy for Garden Grove residents. Thank you to members Dovin and Tran for voting yes on this resolution. And thank you to Councilmember Nguyen for taking a stand and understanding that these matters to our residents. And it was really refreshing to be able to hear your comments last meeting, especially as a Vietnamese elected. And as I mentioned, it was great to be able to share to that young man to say, yeah, your local elected is doing something and is advocating for, taking a stand for our immigrant community here in Garden Grove. And so these examples that I provided of community involvement and support for immigrant neighbors represents the bare minimum that we can do. And we expect the City Council to meet this standard by doing its part to stand with immigrants and refugee communities and vote yes on Agenda Item 20. Thank you.
Karen Nguyen?
Good evening, City Council. My name is Karen Nguyen. I'm a resident of District 3, and I'm a Master of Social Work student. I'm here today urging you to vote yes on Agenda Item 20, because our Garden Grove residents are entitled to the protection of their due process rights and civil liberties. Today, I stand in front of you to speak on behalf of the parents working two jobs to keep their children fed and sheltered. I stand on behalf of individuals who could not access the means to be here in person, and on behalf of the community members who do not feel safe to leave their residence and attend this meeting. Over the past few months, we have seen the direct and residual effects of the immigration raids and unlawful detainment of community members without due process. As someone who works with vulnerable individuals in the community daily, I find it incredibly disheartening when we're describing the raids as, quote, "not as terrifying as some people make it out to be," end quote. The uncertainty, anxiety, and fear of increased immigration enforcement activity have detrimentally impacted the lives of our youth and families in Garden Grove. The fear and anxiety of potential deportation alone can lead to both chronic depression as well as chronic stress in our youth. School attendance rates have been decreasing as youth are now working in place of their parents and taking care of their siblings. My colleagues working in schools describe an increase in behavioral and mental health challenges due to separation anxiety and fear of their parents being deported. Kids cannot concentrate in school when they're wondering if their parents will come home tonight. My colleagues working with the county's Youth Protective Services described an influx of cases as parents are detained and there's no next of kin to take care of the youth. Outpatient clinics like the one I'm at are experiencing an increased number of appointment cancellations as families don't feel safe seeking medical services. That's why it is crucial for us to consider Agenda Item 20. The resolution will help inform residents, businesses, and communities of their rights while connecting all of them to resources. This agenda item has been tabled several times with no observable efforts towards the safety and empowerment of our community. Councilmembers, as representatives of a large diverse community from all walks of life, I encourage you to empathize with your community and reflect on your own walk of life. I encourage you to reflect on your position of privilege and urge you to consider voting yes for Agenda Item 20. Thank you for your time.
My next three speakers will be Ken Tran, Vicky Lee, and Maureen Blackman.
Hello. Good evening, Council. Hi, my name is Ken Tran. I'm a resident of Vietnamese community, and I'm here today to urge you guys to vote yes on Agenda Item 20 and talk about my friend who's unable to attain his citizenship the legal way. Like many of our fellow Vietnamese Americans, we come from a line of immigrants during the Vietnam War as refugees escaped communism. My friend migrated to the States as a teen. However, during his time, he got himself involved in gang activity. He would have lived a completely normal life with his wife and child. However, he was arrested and charged with being associated with his crime with his gang decades after he was involved. And he ended up losing his wife and child and was sentenced to 10 years in prison. I'm a firm believer, if you do the crime, you do the time. So even though he's my close friend, I believe that he deserves what he did. However, and during his last two years of prison, he would eventually volunteer as a firefighter, helping fight California fires for two years where he was a frontline firefighter, and he came before the real firefighters. And because of his work, he would eventually have his criminal record expunged. He would be released from prison a couple of years ago during Biden's administration just because criminals that were immigrants did not immediately get deported. So now his child, so he's grown up, and he loves him very much, but he cannot visit his child because his child lives across the country. And he's worried that if, even with his criminal record being expunged, he's worried that he gets pulled over and ICE will find him and arrest him and deport him, even though his criminal record is expunged. And right now, he has a green card, and he wants to get his citizenship. However, he is worried that once he goes to the immigration office, the ICE will be there and will arrest him, even though, again, his criminal record is expunged and he has served his time and he has done work for his community. He is not the only person in our community that is affected by ICE. The ICE is a previously incriminating, and this also applies to many immigrants. I again understand that this resolution cannot solve all the problems of ICE, and we cannot stop them. However, it shows that Garden Grove is at least doing something to help our immigrants. And I hope that the city council in Garden Grove can alleviate our community's concerns and anxieties by voting yes on Agenda Item 20.
Vicky Lee?
Good morning, City Council and staff. My name is Vicky. I live in District Three. Today, I am with Vit Rice, and once again, I'm here to speak in support of Agenda Number 20. Last time I had spoken in front of the city council, I had asked the question of what is next? And I had told the city council that the youth are closely watching you, both in action and in action, which is why I'm here once more. During the previous discussion, some member of the council had expressed concern over the previous Agenda Number 19, which had advocated for know your rights material to be put on the Garden Grove city website, to which I say, what's the hesitation? As the ICE waves up in Garden Grove and the wider OC area, we have seen all sectors of society, from the youth and students to the general community members, to our allies and fellow organizers, to the migrants themselves, stand up to defend, rise up to the occasion and to defend our people. When we say when migrant rights are under attack, what do we do? Stand up, fight back? That isn't a radical statement that you think it is, but rather, it is our most basic affirmation that we stand in unwavering solidarity with our migrant and refugee community, which makes up over 50% of the city population. To quote the city council, you have said yourself, "We are here because we want to serve." And I do want to express my gratitude to the city council member who have taken that leap of faith to push forward with this resolution, because saying yes to Agenda Number 20 is the least you can do, because we aren't here demanding you to physically put yourself in front of, in the front lines of an ICE attack, but rather, we are simply making the ask to put up the necessary information and resources for our community to not only know their fights, to not only know their rights, but to also understand their fight and to support each other in this much-needed time. That ability to wake up in the morning and to not feel utterly terrified from your own safety, from the safety of your family, and from the safety of your community shouldn't even be debated upon in the first place. And while I may be here with Vit Rice today, just know that I'm also proudly speaking as a Vietnamese American who see this vibrant community of Little Saigon as her home, and I want better for all people who have endured so much collective and personal trauma as a result of state violence, as well as a result of displacement, and as a result of familial separation. Our particular struggle, our particular history of struggle really has ignited that flame within me and my fellow youth to continue making as much noise as possible and to continue our organized effort to call for change within this violent system, because once again, the City of Garden Grove deserves a city council that can resolutely stand with the constituents that have voted them in. Thank you.
Maureen Blackman?
Hello, I'm Maureen Blackman, mayor, council, staff. I sent an email earlier today discussing many of my points about why I'm against this resolution. I feel like the no is, we've had three prior attempts to pass this and to provide taxpayer money to the cause, but it's more than just the money. It's the risk of our city by directing folks to possibly, potentially unvetted groups and people. I think Andrew Do can tell us all about the organizations that claim to be helping those in need. Oh, wait, he can't because he's in federal prison for partaking in those organizations. Our city can't be responsible for vetting these groups. We need to stay out of it. Who will be responsible for vetting them and which employee will be responsible for the groups and the links? We've heard it all from the same folks basically over and over about how they're being feared for illegal immigration enforcement, but many of them don't come out because they're afraid of being bullied. We saw when George and others had stood up, they got social media bullied. I don't think that's called a reasonable discussion. I think it's called bullying. Next, e-bikes. So two e-bike riders were hit by a box truck six weeks ago. They're soccer players from Cal State Fullerton. They were riding without helmets, and it was at dusk. One sophomore player died, taken off life support today, and the other will need years of rehab. It's very tragic, but it's not isolated. The roads are not safe today. E-bikes are everywhere. There's no guidelines, and there should be. I urge Garden Grove and other cities to put guidelines in place for e-bikes and scooters and then enforce it. Thank you.
My next three speakers, Joel Silverthorne, Khalid Hudson, and Carlos Perea.
Hi, thank you, Joel Silverthorne. You've heard me before, I think. Thank you for listening to us on Subject 20 all this time, and we could put it behind us that I think you've collaborated with each other to put the best possible part of this together to make it part of what Garden Grove signs as "Absit invidia," which means we mean no hard will, mean no ill will. And that is what we're trying to do here. And I appreciate you having done that so far, listening, that we keep doing that. Edmund Burke said, "What I'm proud of these young people," because Edmund Burke, the conservative philosopher in the 18th century, who was trying to help the revolutionaries, as you know, with a J.D. degree, that his most famous quote was, "What it takes for evil to, in violence, to continue is for," I'm paraphrasing, "is for good people to do nothing." So I thank you very much for taking this on. And again, I've never seen debates this year that would say, you know, I'm sorry I have to say this, when a debate, when somebody is telling 340 million people that they're eating the dogs, we've stooped, and we've started having ill will. And I don't think, unless you believe anybody's eating the dogs, thank you for staying with the peaceful and the loving people of this city that appreciate what you're doing. Thank you. Have a great night, everybody.
Khalid Hudson?
Good evening. My name is Khalid Hudson, and I'm the Advocacy Manager for CARE-LA, based in Anaheim, California. And I'm here to ask you to support Item Number 20. It is important for the city to support the Garden Grove immigrant community and create a page that consolidates available city resources and lists links of trusted community partners is just a low-hanging fruit, but it is a critical step. Many cities in the area are looking at ways to support their immigrant communities by pouring over their budgets and seeing where some resources could come from, but this isn't that, right? And so I think that this item is just one step to supporting your neighbors and the community itself. Again, as I said the last time, this is a community that is in hurt and in pain, and just being able to go to a one-stop shop or one-stop page to be able to see that there are resources locally for them and their families, or if one of their family members is taken by ICE, then there's resources to kind of fill in the gap until they can figure out something. That is very extremely important. And I would also like to say that hopefully, God willing, this passes tonight, but also to think about language access. You know, if we're dealing with immigrant communities, some might be modern language speakers, Spanish or other languages, to also be able to make sure that they're able to access the information through their native language. Thank you.
Carlos?
Good evening, mayor and city council members. My name is Carlos Perea, and I am the Executive Director of the Harvard Institute for Immigrant and Economic Justice. Before I start on my support for the immigration resolution, I want to say that I am a proud Garden Grove Unified School District graduate. I graduated from Los Amigos High School in 2010, a long time ago. So I appreciate School Board Member Nguyen for speaking in support of this item today. In many of us, some of us grew up in West Anton and some others grew up in Garden Grove, we have been part of the city for a long time. I myself, I came here when I was undocumented, and I went through the school district, and it showed me nothing but love, welcoming, and also opportunity. So believe it or not, there's a lot of undocumented residents that live in your city, young people, families, workers. And whether or not you had acknowledged that before or not, it is, we're part of daily life on the city of Garden Grove. And it is evident by the targeting of your residents by this indiscriminate racist ICE raids. They are racist. We're talking about racial profiling. If someone like me goes out and walking broadly daylight in the street and ICE comes by, they'll pick me up. Guess why? Because I am Latino, first and foremost. They are not going to ask me if I have papers first. They're going to see first if I fit the profile of a Latino man that needs to be removed from the city. So this is what you're dealing with tonight. Tonight, mayor, you have the opportunity to present to the Garden Grove residents that Garden Grove is a true welcoming city, inclusive of everyone, and that will speak up when residents are being targeted. And this is the bare minimum that the city in Garden Grove can do, putting information about people's rights, about what to do and not to do when encountered by immigration officials. That's due process. There's nothing illegal about that. In fact, things are being done illegally against your residents. So due process is an important education campaign that the city can do through the city website and a reliable source, because you're a government entity. And as nonprofits, we're more than happy to be partners with you in this journey because it is needed. And I'm glad that the speaker mentioned Supervisor Do. The Harvard Institute was one of the first organizations that called on Supervisor Do to resign when no one else was doing it. So please support us. Thank you.
My next three speakers, Gabriela Valdez, Scott Harrison, and Kim Nguyen Penelozza.
Hello, good evening, everyone. I want to say thank you, because as one of the residents mentioned, it is a privilege to be able to be here and speak to you all today. And thank you, Councilmember Cindy Tran, for your service. And also, I want to extend a thank you to the community members here, specifically those in that line over there, because I know that this is not your war. You are not being prosecuted.
Ma'am, I need you to speak to us this way. Thank you.
Yes. I want to say thank you because you are fighting this war with us right now, because I am here as a victim. I lived in Santa Ana most of my life, but I loved Garden Grove because most of my family lives here, and I was able to purchase my condo right down on Nutwed in Garden Grove a year ago. And it was a very joyous event for me and my family. I am a single mother with two young children. And a few months ago, some of the neighbors took it upon themselves to remind me that I do not fit in, to remind me that I am, in their words, "a dirty Mexican," that I should go back to where I came from, which to me was Santa Ana. I'm your neighbor. And I needed to make sure to let you know that. I'm usually a quiet person. I stand in the back of the room. I'm very shy, go to church every Sunday, and I felt like I had done something very wrong for people to hate me. And my kids, and my kids now ask me why they are doing that, and I can't answer that. I can't answer that honestly. I can't tell them that there is a hate that unfortunately is brought upon situations like this. And when you read Issue 20, it actually is ridiculous to have to want to protect something that the Constitution already should provide for its citizens. My siblings and I, my kids, my parents, we're all citizens, and we all feel the same fear. We don't walk out because we know that they're not asking questions. They are aggravating people. They are throwing them on the ground. They are aggravating people, they are throwing them on the ground, they are hurting them. They are not asking what you are, or who you are, or what documents you have. They are simply deciding, "You, I want you out," and that's it. And I beg you today for my kids and myself, and my family, and the people who fit my physical description. We need your help. We need your help, because we don't feel safe. Thank you.
Scott Harrison? Yeah, Scott? Oh, okay, that's fine. Scott. Sorry. Kim, you're next.
Sorry. Mayor, staff, council. I had a lot to talk about tonight that I, what I thought I was going to talk about after listening to all the folks. I'm going to change it up a little bit. But I do want to, my first thing I wanted to say was, I'm in great support of Joe Din, who's came here today, regardless of the attacks he's had on the media, which is, it's very disheartening that people can't come and speak truth. So, most of the things that we got to ask ourselves are, is it necessary, and is it true? So I hear a lot of stuff tonight, a lot of words are being manipulated. Residents, yeah, people are residents. Immigration is, you can either be legal or illegal. Those are two different things. I really liked what Anita Riley brought up, was a path forward to allow people to become citizens. And I think it's been a problem for our government for many, many years, allowing people illegally to be here and not pressing them to become citizens, become part of our community. They've made their own communities, and now there's a problem, because that's not working anymore, because it went on too long. But I really, really don't think that any of these other entities should be using the city as their Yellow Page ads. Because that's basically what they're asking for you to do. They're asking for you to put up their flag and send the people to us. And I don't care what you call it, a nonprofit. It is a prof, it's kind of, there's money transacted, there's money profiting. They're hiding under some great laws that we have in this country, but money is moving, and money drives people to do things. And sometimes it's not quite right. So I don't think the city should get in the middle of something that we can't have any oversight over. So that is, I'll have to go back and talk on my other subjects another time, but those are the things I'd like to say today. And I know it's not going to be super popular, but thank you for listening.
Kim Nguyen Penalozza?
Good evening, Mayor, Council Members, and beloved staff. I came here specifically to talk to my former colleagues. I couldn't be more disappointed in you and your lack of leadership. To show no compassion and sympathy with our immigrant community that is under attack is heinous. Don't confuse the fact that you go to food pantries, Bible thump, tell us you love this city, or other lame justifications you make to yourself. Be confused with compassion, sympathy, or leadership. The situation is only escalating. The mass agents are posing a threat to public safety, and it will only get worse. Don't sit there and gaslight the public by making excuses and lying to them. You say you are scared this city will lose funding. No other city has, that has done a lot more, has lost any funding for supporting policy or resources related to aiding our immigrant communities. If you're going to lose funding, it's because this administration is reckless with its oath to serve the public. If you are like your base, racist, and don't support the immigrant community, just say that. Don't feed us lies. Your base has made it very clear who they are and what they believe in. Bullying was mentioned. Let's be clear, that base isn't here because they're scared of being bullied, because we all know that they are the bullies. They're not here because they can't hide behind their computers and don't want to be seen for the racist that they are. One way or the other, grow a spine. People have been coming for weeks, begging you to do something, anything, so much so that they have settled for almost nothing. Resources on a website is one very small thing you can do as a show of good faith. The resolution before you is milquetoast at best. It's the bare minimum. You took an oath to serve the residents of Garden Grove, and you are failing a significant amount of them. Make no mistake, the immigrant communities are residents of Garden Grove. Do better. And I would suggest a friendly amendment to the resolution to specify information be distributed to local businesses so that they can help their employees and their patrons, because you know that these businesses are being targeted. You've met with the car washes, with restaurants, and other places of business that don't have the tools or resources to help. Do better. Thank you.
Tony Flores, followed by Nicole Jaimez, followed by Christine Edis.
Good evening, Mayor, Pro Tem Dovin, Council Members, Staff. I'm Tony Flores. You've already received my objection to this Item 20 through the email. I hope you've had a chance to read it, and everything that's attached to it. What's interesting is, it's not the same folks that keep coming here that are trying to intimidate, harass, or coerce you folks, but the, it's 173,000 that aren't here, that do not have a problem with ICE. And ICE is doing what they're supposed to be doing. You're a city council. You don't have, you don't have federal authority. You should check the municipal code to see what you guys can actually do and not do. Two of you need to recuse yourselves, District 5 and District 6. You need to recuse yourselves from this vote coming up. You're putting out propaganda, you're putting out all kinds of information. You already have a bias, a prejudice toward this vote. You need to recuse yourself. Here's where the city manager and the city attorney need to step in and do your job to let them know where they're at, okay? We've had conversations about that. I know you're smiling, Omar, but that's a nervous smile, I recognize it. But we need to make sure that we move ahead and hold to our laws, our rules, our regulations. That's what we're here for. Okay? And that's why people like Ms. Tran here put her life on the line defending our country. That's why she's wearing a uniform. Okay? And that's what we need to focus on. The First Amendment is out there, it's great. You know, you guys use social media platform to do that, but there is a limit to it. And it doesn't protect unlawful conduct, and doesn't protect lawlessness. Okay? So you need to take a look at that. As far as the city manager is concerned, you need to step in, look at the 2.08.070, 2.08.080, and 2.08.180. We'll talk more about that come Monday. As far as harassing and intimidating, okay, that's under Title 18, U.S. Code Section 2331. And that's what folks are trying to do to Mr. Dovin and the rest of the council members, I'm sure. In fact, and I know somebody from Harvard Institute is here, and I'm an American of Mexican descent, I don't have any problems with anybody. I can move open freely. Matter of fact, a lot of my cousins were at the Dodger Parade, where there was no fear and anxiety, okay? None. There was a free-fall out there. And quite a few Mexicans I'm related to were actually there, without any fear and anxiety. But here's a post from Harvard Institute that's suggesting that Mayor Klaffenstein supports racism, and that Mr. Breidingham is a racist. Nothing can be further from the truth. And shut right here. And those folks owe these people an apology. Mr. Dovin as well, who's taken all kinds of nonsense to try to intimidate and coerce him, but we're not going to be going that route. So we need to make sure that we stick to our guns as far as the law and our rules and regulations, because I can guarantee you, if we vote this through, and some of those things that are on there right now that are posing a risk, a genuine risk with dollars to this city, it's going to go in front of either the DA's office or the FBI. I'll guarantee that. Thank you for your time.
Nicole Jaimez?
All right. Hi, I'm Nicole Jaimez. I didn't really prepare a speech, so I'm just going to say, you know, whatever I want, because it's my right to say it. If you don't like it, you can leave. So a lot of people said some really good things. And part of it, my issue really is that we still have Trump for how many more days? And at the end of the day, if you look at Item 2, it says we're making partnerships. This is more than just resources. Like, I understand you want resources. I do too. There's so many groups of people that need help. Outside of, I think the original resolution said, like, what, 12% were undocumented? But as already been stated, just today alone, what about the seniors? What about the unhoused? Or here we talk about school-related support. What percentage of your families have special needs? What support are you giving for them? The school district's not giving any. I mean, two of you have spouses up there. They don't help at all. They don't, because they have our tax dollars to use on their attorneys. And what do we parents have? Most of us don't have that. So if you're going to make edits to a webpage, then you need to include "for everybody," right? And that's what the title of this supposedly is. "Due Process and Civil Liberties for All." But then you focus only on immigration. So it's one or the other, it's two different things. We already have from years ago, how everyone feels. Joe's already said it's still active. And then you have this other issue of resources. So I get resource on a website, that's great. You don't need this. This is way more than adding resources. And if there is a problem, I mean, you kind of seem like a marshmallow. I wouldn't want you in my corner. You know, I haven't really heard anything good about, you know, our law, our lawyer. So, the issue really is, you want resources? I totally agree. I would like to redo the website, too. The website's wonky. You go under Residents. There's no section that kind of says, "I need help." Why don't you make one? It's enlist what you do under Homeless Services. You have to type it in Google, and then it pops up. Just re-list it, everything you already have. You know, you have your housing help programs, you have your small business grant programs. Why don't you put it all under one section? And that way, we're not segregating people, right? If you really want due process and civil liberties for all, then you're going to help everybody. And this only speaks about immigration. So you are ignoring a huge part of the city. And you know what impacts everybody? Special education. So you want to help everybody, you're going to add some special education resources. You're going to talk about TACA, not Andy and Amy's Safety Group, they do PR. But you're going to have actual resources to help parents, so they know what their rights are. So when the school district does something, they know how to help them. Thank you.
Thank you.
Christine Edis?
Hi, good evening. Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, City Council, and Staff. I am asking for a yes vote on Item 20 in tonight's agenda. Advancing Item 19 during the late night is moving one step closer to what the city needs. As elected officials, you do have a responsibility to take actions on matters that impact your residents. This resolution reflects the mission of our city, to provide responsible leadership and quality services to promote safety, cultural harmony, and life enrichment. Providing information on the city page is the main purpose of having a city website. As you know, other cities that are very similar to us, that are different from us, statewide have resources, have know your rights. It's nothing out of the ordinary. So to inform about know your rights, and the due process will apply to all your residents, whether they use it or not. In addition, information on resources over your website provide a sense of reliability and trust that these local resources are credible and have been utilized. This in turn makes residents more engaged with the city, helps build strong connections, and cultivates an informed, safe community for all. We are tired and we are frustrated that we have to continue to discuss taking action in solidarity with your diverse communities. Please value our time and commitment, and approve Item 20. Our city and its residents deserve leadership that validates our concerns and works together while meeting the needs of your constituents. Thank you.
Majda Dreamy? Followed by Linda Zamora.
Hi, good evening. I didn't even think I was going to speak, but thank you for allowing me, welcome. I'm just going to read off a letter that I wrote to City Council earlier today. It says, "I was deeply concerned by what transpired at the last city council meeting. As someone who values our city's diversity and freedom, I listen closely, not just to the words spoken, but to the emotions behind them. What saddens me the most is the division that continues beyond these walls. It is perfectly acceptable to have differing opinions. That's what democracy is built on. But the law must always come first. Every decision, debate, or resolution must remain rooted in legal and ethical compliance. When council actions cross that line, even unintentionally, it places the city at risk, especially in matters involving funding contracts, investigation from higher authorities. City leaders must remember that their actions are a direct reflection of the community's integrity. Upholding the law and maintaining accountability are not optional. They are the foundation for trust, process, progress, and protection for every resident. We must remember the question, it's not who's right, but who is lawful. As Americans, whether by birth or by choice, we are bound by and protected through our laws. This is what we fight for. I am a proud daughter of two parents who are immigrants, who came to this country seeking opportunity and freedom. They taught me that respecting the law is the foundation in gratitude and growth. I too have been personally affected by this new immigration laws, and yet I continue to stand with the efforts to bring structure and accountability, even if it's difficult. I need, I understand the need to bring resolution and answers to our residents who deserve protection. But that protection must come through trusting the law, not fear. When we continue to listen and to spread fear, we only heighten the frustration. As a resident, when I feel unsafe or uncertain, I would always have to look for my city council or the law to protect me. While I understand ICE's role is to enforce federal law, and other nonprofits' mission is to reform it through advocacy, both serve the same goal. Protecting human dignity, safety, and truth. But collaboration through transparency must be verified information and lawful dialogue in order to bring, to bridge what our community actually needs. I believe that there is information links on, not just our website, but other websites, that we have those resources already readily available to us. If we take the time to sit there and discuss these issues, then we have already done our research, and we just need to look a little bit further to complete that. I have complete confidence in our mayor and our city council, and trust in all the leadership and decisions to make Garden Grove a safe, inclusive, and law-abiding community for all. Thank you.
Linda Zamora?
Good evening, everybody. Linda Zamora here again. I am here to, once again, oppose this resolution. Furthermore, I'm here to ask my council member, Representative Joe Dovin, to make a motion, or support a motion, to kill this resolution once and for all. I'm also here to tell Councilmembers Yessenia and Ariana that I find it very rude and impolite that you don't even reply to emails, that you don't reply to calls, that you don't reply to messages. You elected to be here. You got on the ballot to represent us. So it is your duty to reply to emails, and reply to questions, and to have to send emails over and over requesting for your help. It's very rude and impolite. It also seems to me that Yessenia and Ariana don't understand the role as council members. You're out of your lane. You don't understand your assignment. You are now disguising this resolution under civil liberties. But Garden Grove is not encroaching on anyone's rights. This is the federal government. They're doing it. The demands on this resolution will do nothing to prevent that. I told you last time, and I'm here again to say, that the resolution is utterly flawed. There's no budget whatsoever associated with it. Nobody knows where the money is going to come from. Is it going to come from your pocket? I doubt it. It's coming out of our pocket. It exposes the city to grave risks and undue legal liabilities. I don't know that you've thought about that. It may mean that aid that we get from federal government may get frozen. I don't know that anyone thought about that either. There are no deliverables, nothing. Whatever money we spend on this, we'll, we have no way of checking who is going to benefit from it. So you have no, we're going to do this, and this, and this is going to be the outcome. So we're going to spend money that we don't- So we're going to spend money that we don't have on things we can control for an unknown outcome. How is that being fiscally responsible? With our money? So stop wasting our city's money, staff time, and resources on this. Stop duplicating efforts. There's already plenty of nonprofit organizations providing this type of assistance. Vincent Sarmiento, our supervisor, gave himself a $50,000 raise, and he pledged to give that money to immigration. Why don't you join forces with him to do this? If you do a Google search, it'll take one to two seconds to get Catholic Charities of Orange County, Public Law Center, Viet Rice, Asian Americans Advancing Justice, Orange County Labor Federation, County of Orange County Social Services Agencies, and Orange County Justice Fund for this purpose. Why are we duplicating efforts? It's very perplexing to see nonprofits providing these services here, demanding that they have this resolution. It makes you wonder what their interest is. Stop dividing our city. Do the right thing.
Thank you. All right, that was a robust list of pink cards. That is the end of our oral communication this evening. We also had 62 people write in communications to the city clerk as well. So thank everyone for their comments on item 20. With that, we will take a quick five-minute break.
To conduct other legislative bodies at this time. We will move to the successor agency. Madam Clerk, please call roll.
Member Nguyen?
Yeah.
Member Tran?
Yeah.
Member Dovin? Member Destegi?
Here.
Vice Chairman Yudon? Chair Klaffenstein?
Here.
And Member Bredegham is absent.
All right, we already held oral communication, so that takes us to the consent calendar. I need action on the minutes from the October 28th meeting. Do I have a motion?
I have a motion.
I have a motion in a second. Call for the vote, please.
Motion received, six yes votes.
All right, any matters from successor agency members? Seeing none, we will adjourn and head to our sanitary district. Madam Clerk, please call roll.
Member Nguyen?
Yeah.
Member Dovin?
Present.
Member Yudon?
Present.
Member Destegi?
Here.
Vice President Tran?
Here.
And President Klaffenstein?
Here.
And Member Bredegham is absent.
We again have already held oral communication. That takes us to our consent calendar. We need to receive and file minutes from October 28th. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Motion in a second. Call for the vote, please.
Motion received, six yes votes.
All right, that takes us to items for consideration, and we do have an item this evening, number two.
This evening, we have award of contracts to AKM Consulting Engineering, JIG Consultants, and Civil Tech Engineering, Inc., for on-call design engineering services for various water and sewer capital improvement projects. And our Public Works Director, Bill Murray, is here to provide the report.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Ms. Mayor, members of the council, and now we're under the sanitary district, so that'll be the president and members of the board. Tonight's city council and the sanitary district are being asked to award a contract to AKM Consulting, JIG Consultants, and Civil Tech Engineering, and these are contracts for on-call design engineering services for various water and sewer capital improvement projects. These services are used as part of our capital improvement programs for both of those areas, water and sewer. We are currently experiencing a peak in engineering design work for water and sewer projects and need on-call engineering services to handle that additional workload. Staff believes that the three firms selected will be able to assist the department in meeting the current capital improvement schedules. Staff requests proposals from five firms to provide design engineering services. A panel of three rated the proposals and determined that AKM, JIG, and Civil Tech are best suited and qualified to provide these on-call design services. A fee schedule was negotiated after for each consultant. The summary of the ratings, with the highest total being the most qualified, is in your staff report, in case you want to review it. Each contract is for a not-to-exceed amount of $500,000, and will be charged per the fee schedule in each proposal. Should the council and district decide to award the contracts tonight, the city can begin using the services in December. This concludes staff's report. You're available should you have any questions.
Thank you for the report. Board members, any questions of staff, comments? I'll entertain a motion.
I'll move.
Motion in a second. Call for the vote, please.
Motion received, six yes votes.
Thank you. Any matters from board members? Seeing none, we will adjourn and head back to city council. That takes us on to our consent calendar. This can be acted on in one motion unless one of my colleagues would like to pull an item this evening.
Move it.
Motion in a second. Call for the vote.
Motion received, six yes votes.
All right, that takes us on to public hearings, item number 12.
This evening, we do have a public hearing. This is the second reading and adoption of ordinance number 2971, adopting the 2025 California Building Standards Code. The ordinance entitled "An Ordnance of the City Council of the City of Garden Grove Amending Title 18 of the Garden Grove Municipal Code and Adopting by Reference the Following Primary Codes: California Building Code 2025 Edition, California Residential Code 2025 Edition, California Electrical Code 2025 Edition, California Mechanical Code 2025 Edition, California Plumbing Code 2025 Edition, California Energy Code 2025 Edition, California Fire Code 2025 Edition with Certain Amendments, Deletions, and Additions thereto, California Existing Building Code 2025 Edition, California Green Building Standards Code 2025 Edition, California Reference Standards Code 2025 Edition, and Certain Secondary Codes, including the International Property Maintenance Code 2024 Edition as published by the International Code Council, and the International Swimming Pool and Spa Code 2024 Edition as published by the International Code Council.
I'm sorry I missed that. Can you read that again?
And City Attorney Sandoval can provide a brief follow-up report.
Mayor, members of the city council, you introduced this ordinance at your last meeting. Being that it's adoption of state codes by reference, it's a little different than your regular ordinances in that it still requires a public hearing for second reading and adoption, and that's why it's before you as a second reading. The ordinance will simply update our local construction, building construction codes to the 25 edition of the California Building Codes. We currently have the 2022 editions in our books. The state adopted, updated their codes to the 2025 additions, and they've become effective January 1st, 2026. And what we're doing is bringing our code up to date with the state regulations as well, and that's all we're doing at this time. If you have any questions or want me to go a couple of hours on this, I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have or provide additional information if you need it.
Thank you for the summary. Colleagues, before I open the public hearing, any questions of City Attorney Sandoval or staff? All right, seeing none, I will go ahead and open the public hearing. I do have a pink card. I will call Nicholas Dips.
Hi, Mayor Klaffenstein, members of the council. I'm speaking on this item because as some of you, well, actually, I asked Liz to give you a handout where this is dealing with construction codes. And it's really important, electrical and other trades, that we, when you're, of course, passing these ordinances that we include, there we go, thank you very much, that we include in our efforts as a city to provide whatever we can do to encourage young people and older people to get into the construction trade. So I think as part of this effort on the building codes, that I would ask you to please consider that. And I bring that up because the city of Buena Park had a construction career and apprentice resource fair recently, and they had, it was their very first one. And it was on September the 6th. And you have a letter from council member, from one of the council members, and then you have that there. So it's really important, and I remember being in this, at a meeting back, when was it, May 27th, here at the council meeting, and the mayor had a question, and it was really a good question that you asked of Bill Murray, the Public Works Director. And here's the question.
I have a quick question for you. Why only one person bidding on this? I've noticed that now over the last two items. Is this a rarity? Is there a reason why more people aren't bidding on these projects?
We have a lot of college graduates. We do not have a lot of trade graduates.
So that's where we are. So please, in your consideration of this item, also be, consider having, you adopt these changes in the code, but we don't have enough people to work in the construction field. So, thank you for listening. I have a little bit of time left, but appreciate it. I'm sorry I missed the regular public comment. So that's, and attached to your handout there is also proposed resolution on youth mental health wellness. Thank you.
Is there anyone else wishing to speak on this item before I close the public hearing? Sure?
Having worked at the Garden Grove Home Depot, we wanted all the customers to come in, that like to do handiwork, that electrical department to do what they need to do, but there's been a lot of discussion about people that will jerry-rig at home. So I want that to be focused. So any witness that I've had to that, be help, anything, as we go forward with the electrical codes, that there's, I've had three Home Depots, one in Virginia, one in Phoenix, one here. This is the one that had the most people that just wanted to jerry-rig in their homes, especially with EVs in the garages. So if that could be paid attention to as a witness to that, I'd appreciate it.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak on our public hearing item this evening? All right, seeing none, I will go ahead and close the public hearing. Council members, any discussion, further questions? Otherwise, I'll entertain a motion.
Motion.
I have a motion in a second. Call for the vote, please.
Motion received, six yes votes.
All right, we already voted on item 13, so that takes us to items for consideration. Item number 14, this was a joint action item with the sanitary district, but we have to vote on it again under items for consideration. Number 14.
Item 14 is the award of contracts to AKM Consulting Engineers, JIG Consultants, and Civil Tech Engineering, Inc., for on-call design engineering services for various water and sewer capital improvement projects. And Public Works Director Bill Murray is here for additional questions.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Tonight's city council and the sanitary board are being asked to award a contract to AKM, JIG, and Civil Engineering Tech, exact same contract, and this is for on-call design services. I'm going to cut this report. You don't need to hear it twice, but if there's any questions, I'm available.
Any questions of our Public Works Director, or I'll entertain a motion?
I'll move.
All right, I have a motion in a couple of seconds. Call for the vote, please.
Motion received, six yes votes.
Item 15.
Item 15 is approval of an agreement with Graffiti Protective Coatings, Inc., for citywide graffiti removal services, and Director Bill Murray will provide the report.
Oops, thank you, Madam Clerk, Ms. Mayor, and the members of the council. Tonight's city council being asked to approve a contract with Graffiti Protective Coatings Incorporated for citywide graffiti removal services. Staff proposals using a contract between the city of Bell and Graffiti Protective Coatings that was awarded last June. This contract is a result of a competitive request for proposal process, and it should be noted that using this contract is allowed per municipal code. The Public Works Department previously received an annual general fund budget supplement in the amount of $105,000 to sustain the graffiti removal services at the service level that the council wants. The new contract with GPS reflects a nominal increase of about six grand a year compared to the prior contract. The existing general fund allocation remains sufficient to fully cover the new contract, and the department, Public Works Department, will observe the additional expense through its annual operating budget without requiring any further appropriations. For your information, a total not-to-exceed amounts for the contract is follows. For this fiscal year, we need $291,471.30, and this is a partial contract year. For the 26, 27 fiscal year, that amount rises to $488,919.60, and that is the same for the following year. That'll be fiscal year '27 through '28. By approving this contract, we will be able to continue graffiti removal services without disruption. This concludes staff's report. You're available should you have any questions.
Thank you very much. Colleagues?
I have a question. I was wondering, does this also include, or would it be possible to, like, I know that for most parks, like graffiti is common, would it also include, like, paint color to actually, like, do murals in those commonplaces perhaps as paint supply as well, or is it just the regular covering it and done?
Well, we just have the colors provided for in the contract to just basically cover it, plus redoing murals would actually, it might require talent that I'm not sure exists for graffiti protective services. They're not artists.
Thank you.
Hi, Bill. I know you're always looking forward to my questions. But Bill, is this our existing graffiti removal company?
Yes.
Wonderful. Oh, this is great. They've been very expeditious in their removal, and I really appreciated their participation in our beautification over in Buena Clinton when we had our redo day. I also appreciate that they let me use the pressure washer. That was very nice of them. But they've been very expeditious in the removal, and I think that it's a great idea to continue receiving their services so that we can continue abating these graffiti issues. Thank you.
Thank you. Very important work. We know that this is an issue within our community, and so to have these services and have such robust response to this, I know this is a priority to the community, so we're very grateful. With that, I'll ask for a motion.
Motion.
I'll second.
Motion in a second. Call for the vote, please.
Motion received, six yes votes.
All right, item 16.
Item 16 is award of contract to All Cities Engineering, Inc., for city project number CP 1378,000, Woodbury Road, Taff Street to Bowen Street, Water Improvements Projects, and Public Works Director Bill Murray will provide the report.
And thank you, Madam Clerk, Ms. Mayor, members of the council. Tonight's city council is being asked to award a contract to All Cities Engineering Incorporated for the construction of water improvements in Woodbury Road from Taff Street to Bowen Street. A map is provided in your staff report showing the location. The city's 2020 master plan update identified this project as needed to be replaced due to insufficient fire flow and end-of-life issues with the current water pipe. The project consists of constructing approximately 2,500 feet of new 10-inch and 600 feet of new 8-inch polyvinyl chloride, or PVC, water main. The project will include the replacement of five fire hydrants, 68 water service connections, and eight connections to the existing water system. In October, eight qualified bids were received, and the lowest responsible bidder is All Cities Engineering, with a bid of almost $1.8 million. This project is included in the adopted fiscal year 2025 capital improvement project budget and will be financed with water funds. Should the council decide to award the contract tonight, the city can expect work to begin early next year and should be completed before summer. This concludes staff's report. You're available should you have any questions.
Thank you for the report. Mayor Protem?
This is a comment, Director Murray. Thank you very much, working hard on this project. It's encapsulated in District 4, I believe. Correct?
I'll have to look that up.
It's on the map. Anyway, I want to bring to attention of the residents in my district, D4, that by summer next year, you will have some sewer deficiency issues resolved and put in for permits. Thank you.
Any other comments, or is that a motion?
Motion.
I'll second.
Motion in a second. Call for the vote, please.
Motion received, six yes votes.
Item 16, 17.
Item 17 is approval of an amendment to extend the agreement with Turbo Data Systems, Inc., through June 30th, 2027, to provide parking citations management services for the city, and Police Deputy Chief Dalton is here to provide the report.
Good evening, Mayor, city council, city manager, and city staff. I'm here to seek city council approval to extend the city's contract with Turbo Data Systems, Inc., to provide municipal parking citation management for the city. The current contract with Turbo Data Systems was approved by city council on September 24th, 2019, with the final two-year option performance period ending on September 30th, 2025. In July of 2025, the parking enforcement and street sweeping operations transitioned from the Public Works Department to the Police Department. Upon review, it was determined that the Parking Enforcement Citation Software Contract with Turbo Data Systems, Inc., was set to expire before the calendar year. To ensure continuity of operations and avoid any disruption to essential services, the Police Department recommends maintaining the existing arrangement with Turbo Data Systems, Inc., rather than initiating a request for proposal process at this time. Retaining the current contractor will allow staff to continue utilizing an established and proven system while the department becomes more familiar with operational needs and processes related to parking enforcement. Therefore, staff has determined that it would be in the best interest of the city to dispense with the formal bidding process pursuant to the municipal code 2.50.060G to maintain consistency in operations and established practices. Staff recommends extending the current agreement with Turbo Data Systems through fiscal year 2027. Turbo Data Systems, Inc., has agreed to maintain the 2019 contract pricing through June 30th, 2027. The cost for additional users is outlined in Attachment A. The total cost for providing municipal parking citations management services from December 2025 to June 2027 shall not exceed $400,000. The amount is included in the Police Department's adopted fiscal year 2025, 2026, and 2026, '27 operating budgets. No additional appropriation is necessary to extend the agreement for two years. It is recommended that city council approve Amendment 4 to the agreement with Turbo Data to extend the contract for parking citation services through June 30th, 2027, and dispense with the bidding process pursuant to the municipal code, and authorize city manager or designate to execute the amendment on behalf of the city and make minor modifications as appropriate. That concludes my report, and I'm available for any questions.
Thank you.
Question for Deputy Chief Dalton. Do we expect to, or do we anticipate opening up to open competitive bid in the summer of 2027?
Based on the evaluation that we're going to perform from now until then, it's more than likely that we will, to see what other competitive bids are out there.
Or you would come back with another request for extension, correct?
It's possible, depending on what we find out.
And so far, you're satisfied with their services?
Yes, we are.
Thank you.
If there's no further questions, I'll entertain a motion.
Motion.
Motion in a second. Call for the vote, please.
Motion received, six yes votes.
Item 18.
Item 18 is approval of an amendment to extend the agreement with Sweeping Corp. of America, SCA, through June 30th, 2027, to provide street sweeping services for the city, and Deputy Chief Dalton will provide that report.
Again, good evening, Mayor, city council, city manager, and city staff. I'm here seeking city council approval to extend the city's contract with Sweeping Corp. of America, or SCA, to provide street sweeping services for the city. The contract with Sweeping Corp. of America, formerly known as Clean Street, Inc., was approved by the city council on January 22nd, 2019, with the final performance period ending on December 31st, 2025. In July of 2025, the parking enforcement and street sweeping operations transitioned from the Public Works Department to the Police Department. Upon review, it was determined that the street sweeping contract with Sweeping Corp. of America was set to expire at the end of the calendar year. To ensure continuity of operations and avoid any disruption to essential services, the Police Department recommends maintaining the existing arrangement with Sweeping Corp. of America rather than initiating a request for proposal process at this time. Retaining the current contractor will again allow staff to continue utilizing an established and proven system while the department becomes more familiar with operational needs and processes related to street sweeping. Therefore, staff has determined that it would be in the best interest of the city to dispense with the formal bidding process pursuant to the municipal code to maintain consistency in operations and established practices. Staff recommends extending the current agreement with Sweeping Corp. of America for an additional one and one-half years. The total cost for the one-and-a-half-year contract extension is as follows: January 2026 to June 2026, $419,788.81. Fiscal year 2026, 2027, $903,578, for a total of $1,323,366.81. These amounts are included in the Police Department's adopted fiscal year 25, '26, and 2026, '27 operating budgets. No additional appropriation is necessary to extend the said agreement. It is recommended that the city council approve Amendment Number 4 to extend the Sweeping Corp. of America contract for municipal street sweeping services for one and one-half years through June 30th, 2027, and dispense of the bidding process pursuant to the municipal code, and authorize the city manager or designate to execute the agreement, I'm sorry, execute the amendment on behalf of the city and make minor modifications as appropriate. That concludes my report, and I'm available for any questions.
Thank you. We have a question by Mayor Protem, and then Arianna.
A question and a suggestion. Deputy Chief Dalton, do we have a reporting or tracking process where certain streets or certain days, the sweeping services are not provided? Do we track that?
Yes, we do.
Can we have that report for the future? Because we may have streets that are missed, just like trash pickup. Sometimes, certain streets don't have their trash picked up. Yesterday was Tuesday, but on Monday, the usual sweeping day on my street, I didn't see any sweepers. Everybody in my block moved their cars, and it wasn't swept. So I'm reporting that to you, that these missed sweeping should be tracked, and if it is something that they acknowledge as having missed that service, that we should get a credit back for those days, or those streets, or those times when we did not get the sweeping services. So any tracking would help, any credit back would help. I have to be accountable to the public who gets citations when they're parked, when they're not supposed to park, but then when they move their car and they notice the street didn't get swept. And some people would report it, and some won't. I live on Bonnie, and on Monday, this last Monday, it was not swept. Just my question, my suggestion, and that's for your department to look into it, but I'm not against renewing this contract or extending it. I will vote it up.
Thank you. Councilman?
Hi, Captain. So I'm looking at the service cost breakdown rate table, and in looking at the rates that were being charged, I noticed that special sweep rates are a higher rate. That's $150 an hour with a projected annual cost of $3,750. The other services seem to be pretty straightforward and pretty well-defined, but what kind of sweeping instances would fall under the category of special sweep rates, just so we know, since it is the most expensive hourly rate that we're being charged?
So I think those that would fall under that would be strawberry festival, cleaning the streets after the parade, cleaning the streets after the festival, any events that aren't in the normal course of business of sweeping the streets.
Thank you.
Can I just ask a question, just from public facing, with this now sort of changing a bit? What they see, the same street sweepers, the same cars that follow behind, all of that stays the same for the most part, or will that also change somewhat? The little truck that follows the...
So that the, are you asking by transitioning from Public Works to the PD?
Right. Will that, the look of that and the feel of that, that people are going to see a difference, or is it going to basically remain the same?
They'll see a difference. We redecalled the trucks to identify them as belonging to the Police Department, as opposed to Public Works. But other than that, everything else is the same.
Perfect. Thank you so much. Thank you so much. Colleagues, do we have a motion?
Motion. Our second.
I have a motion and a second. Call for the vote, please.
Can we clarify, who was the motion, the first and the second?
I think it was Philip and then Joe.
I'm the second.
Philip, thank you. Motion received, six yes votes.
Item nineteen.
Item nineteen is award of contract to RG General Engineering, Inc., for the Community Project Funding City Parks Improvements Project, IFB number S dash thirteen eighty-one. And Deputy Director Janet Palliau is here to provide the report.
Good evening, Mayor, and members of the City Council. This evening, staff would like to request that the City Council award a contract for the Community Project Funding City Parks Improvement Project to RG General Engineering, Incorporated. On September nineteenth, twenty twenty five, staff solicited bids for park improvements that include Hester Basin Park, Jardine de los Niños Park, and West Haven Park, with the following scope of work: demolition and replacement of two-part playgrounds and playground surface; demolition of existing restroom buildings, and installation of two new pre-engineered restroom buildings; concrete walkways, concrete paving, irrigation systems, and site utilities. On October twentieth, six bids were received and opened by the City Clerk's Office. On October twenty eighth, twenty twenty five, staff notified the two lowest bidders, Shiraz Construction and Empire Design and Build LLC, that their bid proposals were found non-responsive. Several irregularities were identified in the bid proposal submitted on behalf of Shiraz Construction, including calculating the total amount for bid items incorrectly. Several required forms were either incomplete, not completed at all, and/or were not submitted with the bid proposal, including the non collusion affidavit, bid bond forms, and federal forms that need to be completed and signed in order to be in compliance with Housing Urban Development Department. Irregularities were also found and identified in the bid proposal submitted on behalf of Empire Design and Build LLC. That included not submitting the updated contractor's proposal forms, pages eleven through fifteen, provided in Addendum Number One, and did not submit required federal forms that needed to be completed and signed in order to be in compliance with Housing Urban Development Department. State law provides that bids that do not conform to the invitation for bids must be rejected and run non-responsive unless the City Council determines that these irregularities are inconsequential, do not affect the bid price, and do not give the bidder a competitive advantage over the other bidders. Staff's independent review of Shiraz Construction and Empire Design Build LLC bid proposals concluded that weighting these irregularities in their bid would give these companies a competitive advantage over the other bidders, given the number of irregularities that was found. Staff proceeded to review the bid documents, sorry about that, submitted by the third lowest contractor, RG General Engineering, Incorporated, with a total bid amount of one million, five hundred and forty-four thousand, three hundred and forty-eight dollars. The licenses and references of these, of this contractor have been reviewed and verified by staff, and all their documentation is in order. If approved, the contract schedule will start in December twenty twenty five, with completion anticipated by June twenty twenty six. The cost to proceed with this contract is included in the city's adopted five-year capital improvement plan. The project is funded by Community Project Fund Grant through the Department of Housing and Urban Development, and also Park Fee Funds. It is recommended that the City Council reject Shiraz Construction and Empire Design and Build LLC bid proposals as non-responsive, award a contract for the Community Project Funding City Parks Improvement Project in the amount of one million, five hundred and forty-four thousand, three hundred and forty-eight dollars to RG General Engineering, Incorporated, and authorize the City Manager or designate to execute the agreement on behalf of the city and make minor modifications as appropriate. Thank you. That concludes staff's report, and I'm available to answer any questions.
Thank you for the report. We'll start with Cindy. Councilman.
Yeah, just a quick note, thank you for providing the detail, because sometime when we make decisions and we don't really know the story behind, in this case, a lot of time when we look at the bid, we only look at the lowest one, and you explain why we didn't pick that one, because they will not respond. And not just that, you get the detail that staff verify and, you know, validate, making sure that, you know, they derive source. So thank you for doing that. And so just, this is talking apart, so just congratulations to some of the area that's going to get improved. I'm looking forward to see, you know, when we're going to have the fun or it on the pipeline to get to the gathering group part. So, thank you.
First and foremost, thank you so much, Janet, and my gratitude also goes to John Montanes, because I know how hard and long you guys have been working on getting the funding for these improvements, and even conceptualizing these and getting these through. I mean, you guys were talking about this years back, even when I was on the Parks and Recreation Commission, so I'm really excited that we're at the place where we're going to sign a contract, and we're going to see completion of all of these wonderful projects. Personally, because one of them is going to be happening at Jardine de los Niños, which is in Buena Clinton in my district, and also at Hester Basin Park. My question to you is, it's because a lot of time has passed since the last time that I saw any of the visuals for what these park playgrounds might look like. Have there been any changes? And can we expect a report and update regarding any changes or modifications to the planned design of these park improvements?
Yes. So both of these park playgrounds and the two restroom buildings, we brought to council some time ago to get the contracts approved for the purchase. So from the last time you've seen the design, nothing has changed. We actually already had them ordered and manufactured. Now what we're doing is getting the general contractor on board, who's going to do the installation. So none of those visuals have changed, but we can definitely provide you guys with an update that includes, just to remind you guys of what the playground pieces look like and the colors, and just, it's going to look great, so.
Thank you, Janet. I think the only other update that I would want, because I noticed in the contract, it says that the updates will happen at the kind of order decided by the contractor. So just, I think the only update I think we would really need is kind of when each particular improvement is going to happen as it's happening, just so that we also can let our constituents know when to expect maybe that these improvements, or even that the construction is going to take place. Thank you, Janet.
And just to add to that, just so that, make sure everybody receives the information, is the contract is for a hundred and forty days, and so we are going to have pre-construction, and during that time, we will discuss which project should go first based on their work crew and timelines that the contractor will have. But everything will be completed within a hundred and forty working days, and so I'll make sure that you guys receive updates of which park is going to go first, or if they're all going to go simultaneously. So that'll be discussed during pre-construction. So, thank you.
If I may?
Yes.
I am absolutely thrilled. Thank you so much for the report. It is, it was in my vision to see something like this come alive, and just to, it's a privilege to be able to follow through with all of the positive changes that are happening in a community, so many public space that's going to be the best, you know, for our constituents, open spaces, green spaces, that they can take their children. So I just want to give you, toodles to you and to Parks Department for all the hard work and dedication. I know it took a long, a long, a long time for this to come through, and I'm absolutely thrilled, excited, and I can't wait to see our community come out to these open spaces and have that security for their children to have a safe place to play. So thank you so much for all the hard work that you're doing. I've already seen the projects, and I'm really excited for what's to come, so it's coming soon. I'm super, super stoked. Thank you.
Thank you.
Colleagues? Motion?
Yes. Second.
We'll move in a second.
Motion and a second. Call for the vote, please.
Who was the first? You know what? You take it first, Yesenia. I'll be the second. Thank you.
Motion received, six yes votes.
Great. Onto matters, item twenty.
Item twenty is adoption of a resolution promoting protection of due process and civil liberties for all.
Well, I'll kick off the conversation. First and foremost, I want to thank all of the residents that have come today and have been coming for the last several months to share your stories, to share your concerns, to the business owners that reach out to us to tell us about their concerns and their struggles, and whether, you know, you came in to speak in favor of this item or not, or whether you raised a concern. I'm glad that you're here, because this is a public forum, and we are here to listen to you. And I want to make sure that when we have conversations about this very, very pressing and important matter, it's happening here in front of all of you guys on public record, not, you know, somewhere where you can't see the information. I want to make sure that we are all receiving the same information at the same time, so this is why I want to make sure we're having this conversation together. You know, we had a very wonderful conversation last time. I want to thank the colleagues that, you know, definitely voted in support of this, and in particular, thank you to Councilmember Mayor Protem, Joe Dovin, for, you know, collaborating with us and providing your input and providing your edits. I would definitely like to be able to move forward with this item as is, but I, of course, understand some of you guys might have any further questions or conversations, so I'm willing to, you know, entertain this, as we've had a lot of input from our residents with regards to this matter. I am ready to move in favor of passing this resolution as is, and if I have a second, I hope we would be able to move forward with a vote.
Ken?
Hold on.
We can have dialogue.
We can have dialogue.
Thank you. We've debated, we've deliberated, and tonight, we will decide. Well, thank you for everyone who have been here the last few months, and with all due respect, I truly appreciate all those who came and spoke, and even those who did not come and speak, sent in emails or communication, who are not here tonight, but they're watching from home, or following the news, and you're kind of the stand-in for them, so bravo for everyone who have gone the distance with us. Tonight, we find ourselves in Samaria. We also find ourselves in a little mini Trojan War situation, where some people are skeptical whether this resolution is a Trojan horse, where it will open the floodgates for all sorts of dangerous things, all sorts of risks. I'm not going to repeat everything that's been said in the last few months, including those that have been expressed tonight. There are risks. Helping others always comes with risk. We find ourselves in Samaria tonight. Are we going to pass up on a person who's dying in the desert, begging for a drink, just to survive, or are we going to render assistance? If we can help one person, one family, with an information resource hub, even if it's duplicative, even if they can find all that information on Google and everywhere else, I'm willing to take that risk, and you are going to take it with me. It's your taxpayer's dollar, and mine too. So I'm all for transparency, accountability, and responsibility. We have to be responsible to you for our vote. We can't just spend your money frivolously, but we can't, cannot spend it. I have a promise from my colleague here that this information website may not cost the city anything, but I'm willing to vote on it even at a cost to our city. It's worth it. It's worth it. Not hundreds of millions of dollars we're talking about. We're not even talking about hundreds of thousands of dollars, are we? So I said earlier, I'm going to give you a preview, and we will vote, we will act with courage, out of courage, not out of fear. So I urge my colleagues, second, third, fourth, and so on, let's vote it up. Let's vote it up. And let's set an example for all the other cities. Yes, yes, we can be that shining city on a hill. Yes, Garden Grove. Garden Grove is not Gotham Grove, okay? We're not going to turn into Gotham Grove anytime soon. We're going to do it our way, and I truly appreciate my colleagues to afford me the revisions. I did it on the dice, and we have a red line version, and we have a clean version. It's all on our website. Please make good use of Garden Grove website. Go there, see the agenda, scroll down, get to the page where we have the red line version, and we have the clean version. We are voting on the clean version, and the clean version will provide for the information resource hub, and it will reaffirm everything we know about the U.S. Constitution and American democracy. It's okay if it's repetitive. It's okay if we reaffirm it. We did it last week with a resolution for the Garden Grove Police Department. We reaffirmed, so it was a vote of confidence. We support our law enforcement, we support our chief, we support our Garden Grove Police Department, and this resolution, I don't see it as an anti ICE resolution. I reject that notion, and I edit it heavily, so that it's not an anti ICE resolution. It's not an anti-Garden Grove resolution either. It is a pro-Garden Grove resolution, the clean version. Let's meet each other halfway. One of the speakers came and read back to me my own quote, and I was shocked, surprised I said that. I don't want to take it back, though, it's on the record. So, yeah, we, we're all going to be a little bit unhappy. That's the art of the compromise. Some people right here, still here, they're my friends, they're disappointed. Some of you who've been opposing me for months are disappointed, but we're going to get to a resolution. And I said resolutions are not solutions necessarily, but they may be a path forward. But we need to have guardrails, so I will vote it up with one caveat, and one caveat only, and that's a kind of disclaimer, that we do not endorse any person, organization, goods, or services should they appear on the website. We don't endorse. We can make it available, it should be vetted, there should be certain criterias. Some of the criterias you already heard about, which is it's government-funded, government-approved, and/or the government will be responsible for those resources, and I have three of them right here. One is the Know Your Rights, which is put out by the House Government, Know Your Rights webpage of our Congressman Derek Tran. And the other one is a Legal Aid Community Aid Society of California, which is a, another website that provides its programs and services in the areas of immigration law. And the third one is also from a federal agency associated with Derek Tran's house.gov/services. Help federal agencies, and I have a letter here dating back to July third, signed by none other than our Mayor Stephanie Klaufenstein, or Councilmember District Five, Yesenia Munetan, Councilmember District Six, Arianna Restegui. Because of the Brown Act, I didn't know about it, I didn't sign on to it, but I would have. So give me a minute to read it, because some of you don't have it in front of you. Dear Congressman Tran, we are writing in response to growing concerns over ongoing federal immigration enforcement activity in our city. Community members have reported heightened anxiety due to a lack of transparency and coordination from federal agencies, particularly DHS and ICE. Information accurate or not spreads rapidly and without clear communication from our federal officials, both the city and our residents are left in the dark. We understand your office has sought clarification from ICE, but has not yet received a response. In the meantime, we continue to monitor community reports and urge residents to contact your district office with concerns. This uncertainty is creating ripple effects. Many residents are afraid to leave home, and we're already seeing signs of food insecurity and reduced use of public services. If your office is aware of any federal programs or partnerships that could exist with food distribution or public reassurance, your support would be invaluable. To assist your residents, we're directing them to the following resources: Know Your Rights. We appreciate your continued advocacy and welcome any updates, resources, or opportunities for collaboration or better support our concerned residents during this time. This still stands. This letter has not been revoked. Thank you for your leadership, Madam Mayor. Thank you, council members. This dates back to July 3rd. We're here, what, November 12th? It's taken us this long to get here, but we are here in Samaria tonight. Our humanity is being tested. We're going to pass the test? I think we can pass this test together. I'm not afraid of the federal agencies coming down to investigate us. I've never heard anybody go to jail for passing a resolution. Maybe maybe you and I would be the first one. But I haven't heard anybody go to jail for putting some information on a webpage either. But it should be vetted. We're not going to endorse any organization that's potentially illegal, promotes terrorism, or any of that. I I don't think that's going to be the case. But anybody who feels conflicted should recuse. If for any reason, some of the reasons were raised tonight, like any council member feel like they need to recuse, I think they should, because there will be others asking for investigation. And indeed, we may be investigated, and indeed, we may lose funding, and indeed, we may be prosecuted. Those are the risks. Helping others always comes with risk. So let's do the right thing. I've voted up. But please read the clean version. If a member wants to read, it's pretty short. Otherwise, I direct the public to read it for yourself. That's all I have to say before we second and close this vote out.
Yes, so thank you so much to Council Jodovin to read this letter. I'm the one that actually brought it back today. So early on, when we first started with this, like you said, in July, I would have wanted to do something similar, but because, like you said, the Brown Act, right after I saw this, but that was too late for me to put my name on it, and actually, I was not able to. So I brought it back here today. I will wonder if we could do, we send this again and have all the council and the mayor to sign and send it back again if we are okay with it here. So that's first. Second, well, actually, first, I just want to say thank to all the residents who came here and shared your view. Yes, we listen to your voice every time you come here and speak, whether you, you know, you agree or do not agree, and we listen to your side and see what is the best way to move forward. And one of the guests speak, one of the residents mentioned about that, you know, as a team, we work together to come up with the right solution. And so before I said my view, I just want to say really quick all the things that I have done since the day one. In July, that actually when I went and met with Vidri Tu, related to the topic. After that, I reached out to all the local city, especially Santana. They provide me the packet that what they did, and I want to do similar thing for our city. I did talk to the mayor. We were planning to do an event, but because we have to contact all different group, and it take time. So originally, we were planning to do early next year, but now with all this, so we're going to do it in December 6th, and it's going to be at a local church in Garden Grove. We will have, you know, free legal service. And so, like I said, mayor supported, and we we've been talking about that. And it's for everybody, you know, everyone is welcome to come and get the free legal service. Relate to, go back to the topic, the letter, go to Derek Tran, is, you know, the right play. The second thing is that I I because of the Brown Act, I couldn't talk to all the council member here, but I did talk to council member George Bridigum, who's not here. We draft a letter that we would like to send it to the governor, asking him to come up with a process, a solution, or a direction, a guideline. What is it that each city should have so that way this city doesn't have to do duplicate work and, you know, on the taxpayer money? And so it's very simple, straightforward. So I have the draft here. I could read, or if the council member here would like to review and sign, I'm happy to do so, too. Very simple and straightforward. Back to this resolution. I remember last time when we voted up, we said we would, you know, of course, we went with the person that council member Jodovin did the red line. One thing that I mentioned that I didn't want our staff to have to spend the money or the funding that we do not have, right? Council member Yesenia mentioned that there will be no cost to the city, and I do not know how you would be able to do all this, you know, without cost to the city. I do have many projects relate to safety, relate to thing for, you know, school student not walking through the path that, you know, with the homeless graffiti and all kind of thing, thing like that, that I need to help, or the restroom that need help in Garden Grove parks. And so that's why I, you know, so think, there's many things that we need the money to from our city to dedicate to those area, and that will benefit everyone, whether, you know, you legal or not. So by reading this, I agree with most of the item, except the part that when we talk about we direct the city staff to do many things. How would you identify which one is the right one? How far, how extended do we want our city staff to do? How much is it going to cost the city? So one of the resident mentioned earlier, she mentioned about a pay that have all the resources that the city offer, or thing that people could get information, you know, from from state or from federal level that it available for everyone. So anyone would be able to come there and and learn about your right. I actually, and thanks to Oma for providing me some of that information. I went to the website. I checked every, all the information there. Know Your Right, how to do, you know, how to react when things happen, and presentation, and so many resources that already out there. You just have to click, you know, just put one thing, and then it will come up to you. So you're talking about collaboration, working together. As I mentioned, I I'm okay with most of the language, except the part that, you know, number two and number three, when we talk about identify resources for immigrant rest and refugee resident, et cetera. Can we just simplify to that so that it will support everyone in term of the resources? Like I mentioned earlier, maybe just the one pay on the city side, so all the resources available. You're talking about offering emergency and crisis support, legal services, workplace, employment, et cetera. All of this will be some somewhat that a resources pay that anyone can go, not just focus on certain. And then the other part, kind of similar to direct our staff to, let me see, to identify program resources for emergency, include information that relevant for the impact by immigrant effort, enforcement activity. So we are not in business for immigrant, right? Because all the people are going to say impact by different things. So can we just have the pay? I'm not sure how much that's going to take, what the the cost and the effort our staff have to do. But if the way it is right now, I don't think that I feel comfortable to to vote yes, just because we talked about compromise, collaboration. What is it the best for our resident? So that's just a couple of things that I want to bring up, and I would like to hear the input from everyone.
Yes, I'm going to rebut my colleague Cindy Tran. You've had more than a week to edit and revise, suggest, change. You didn't do it. You didn't do it agenda review. I asked city manager, did anybody edit, revise, add, change? The answer I got was no. So we're not doing it on the dice. If you're not comfortable, abstain or vote no. I'm voting yes. I've already given the people a promise. I brought it back for a vote. I didn't bring it back for discussion. That was last week, last meeting. Respectfully, Cindy, respectfully, we are either voting on the clean resolution, the clean version, or we're going to open it up for debate, and we're going to kick the can down the road again. You want a substitution motion for to table this resolution indefinitely, like I did the last one? I did that. You want to do that? Or you want to kick it down the road another three months after the holidays? Fine, do a substitution motion. This is not the be all, end all of resolutions. This is not the mother of all resolutions. This is just a resolution entitled, "A Resolution of the City Council of the City of Garden Grove Promoting Protection of Due Process and Civil Liberties for All." This is not the end all, be all. This is not the solution to everything. This is just a good start. You're in Samaria. There's a person who needs water. Give him a little water. That's all the people's asking for. They didn't ask you to feed him. They didn't ask you to clothe him. They didn't ask you to take him home and raise him. Just give the guy a fighting chance. I had to push back, Cindy. Voting and ready. Thank you.
I want to second that vote as written as well.
All right, so we have a motion in a second. Call for the vote, please.
Motion received. We have six or four yes votes. That's Mayor Protem Dovin, Councilmember Arastegui, Councilmember Munetan, and Councilmember Nguyen voting yes, and two abstaining, Councilmember Tran and Mayor Klaffenstein, with Councilmember Bridigum absent. Motion carries.
Thank you. All right. With that, we will go around the horn further in just one second. If you would give me the liberty to circle back on an item quickly that was addressed at rural communication about e-bikes. That has been an ongoing issue. I don't know if it's citywide, or if it's more pertaining to certain areas of the community, but it's definitely something of concern to many people in the community. We have a lot of youth on e-bikes, and some of these are kind of almost going outside of what I would consider to be even an electric bike. I think some of them, they're almost like a motorcycle at this point, the the speeds that they're going at, and maybe not necessarily understanding all the rules of the road. And I know that there is, and I'll, I hate to put city attorney Sandoval on the spot, but I know there is legislation. I know OCTA is actively engaged and at the table of that legislation and has created a whole section on their website of best practices about different e-bike rodeos, you name it. They have quite a bit of information, which I'm sure we can glean from and potentially share. But if if you could, city attorney, just share a little bit about this and where that stands for our city as well.
Our current regulations in our municipal code treat e-bikes as motorized vehicles, and so they are not allowed on sidewalks. They have to, similar to bicycles, except with the, you know, with the motors. So they're required to stay on the main road and and follow the rules of the road. Applies to bicycles as well.
Would there be an opportunity, perhaps, have someone from OCTA's Act of Transportation come out and maybe share some of what they're doing on their end with with e-bike, just outreach and education? And maybe we can kind of piggyback and use some of that as we move forward, just to share with the greater community?
Sure, sure. I mean, if the council wishes to adopt additional regulations, that it's also something that we can pursue.
Very good. Thank you. I appreciate that. Okay, we will start with Councilman Philip Nguyen tonight.
Thank you, Mayor. I would like to thank you all our residents for being here tonight to give your opinions. We listen to you, and we do our best to respond to serving you. Again, I do believe in this Resolution 20 to it provide more resource information to support our resident, and it's for our resident use as needed. And to report back to the last two weeks, I want to recognize the United States Marine Corps on this veteran day and the Marine Corps 250th birthday, November 10th. We honor the courage, the sacrifice, and unbreakable spirit of every Marine, past, present, and As more exciting news for me, last week, on Thursday, November 6th, I have an opportunity to have a ride along with the Orange County Fire Authority Station Number 85. Thanks to OCFA Chief Covey and City Manager Lisa Kim to arrange such an amazing experience for me. I want to talk a little bit about OCFA, so our resident can acknowledge more about our The Orange County Fire Authority OCFA is a regional fire protection and emergency medical service agency, serving nearly 2 million residents across in a corporate area of Orange County, California, and 23 contract city. These included Aliso Viejo, Bonaparte, Cypress, Dyna Point, Garden Grove, Irvine, La Palma, Laguna de Hill, Laguna de Gal, Laguna de Woods, Los Alamitos, Mission Viejo, Rancho Santa Margarita, Santa Ana, San Clemente, San Juan, Caspito, Sil Beach, Stanton, Thurston, Villa Park, Westminster, and Yobalinda. And I visited Fire Station 85 at 12751 Western Avenue, Garden Grove, California, where Captain Jose and his fire officer provide a warm welcome and presented the station operation activity, demonstrating a high level of professionalism and discipline. Amazing. Fire officer in emergency can suit up full gear in less than one minute and ready in action to save lives and property. I have learned so much about OCFA and deeply appreciate their service for our community. I'm highly on commendation. Thank you. That will be the end for my interview today.
Councilman?
Thank you, Mayor. So again, just like I mentioned earlier, thanks to the resident who came here. And like I said in my, during my vote, that I just want to include everyone, and that's why the process, I guess, because I didn't know. I did ask a council member about the process, and I did talk to the staff, but I didn't know that I was supposed to revise it. I thought it was just for discussion. So anyway, it's already voted. So a couple of things. First, I want to say thank to our staff for the opera day. The mayor, council member Ariana, and myself went to the opera day with our staff. It was really nice to hear from the public voice that majority of the team member that live in Garden Grove City, and they said they want the best for our city in term of, you know, plant another tree, or just do the best that they can where they live in. Thank you to all of them for their hard work. The trees were really heavy and took a lot of effort, but we were able to support in term of just do a quick putting the dirt there. Next, I want to say thank to Sergeant Brown for helping with Next, I want to say thanks to Sergeant Brown for helping with the homeless issue at the corner of Chapman and Gilbert. We, Sergeant Brown, Matt Webb, and business owner was there that they gave us a quick feel and what that they need help with. So hopefully after the walk, the property manager will be able to take some action that was suggested by Sergeant Brown, so that way we will have less of the issue about homeless breaking in and the safety for the, the business owner there. Thanks to Assembly Trita for the senior scam. I attend a couple days ago, and I myself know several senior that got scammed and lost hundreds of thousands of dollars, just because, you know, listen to the people call on the phone and scare you and ask you that you have to pay the money, et cetera. So thank you for doing some of those events in Garden Grove City. So I was able to talk to some of the senior, and meeting some of them came actually from Sarito to come here and learn about, you know, how to protect themselves from being Also, I attend Scout Orama, Mayor was there. So during that event, I was able to talk to many scouts, boy and girl, and they actually, after the event, as of yesterday, they reached out to me and they would like to do some project in Garden Grove City, so that way they would be able to make Garden Grove City a better place, even though they do not live in Garden Grove City. It was kind of, kind of funny, because we did have scout from Westminster to come here and, and ask for the help. I mentioned earlier about December 6th, we're gonna have free legal service, and I'm working with some of the group right now, as one of the speaker here from Harbor Institute, so we will talk more on that, and more information will come out. Hopefully, everybody who has been speaking and want to learn more would be able to get the resources that you're looking for. And last but not least, November 22nd, Mayor. So Mayor and I are with some of the private group working on a event that fits of gratitude. We're gonna provide food. Last year, we provide, we serve about 400 people, and this year the same thing. So I have been asking, and I myself donate money to buy food tray, and Mayor, yeah, the same thing. And thanks Mayor for today, you actually donate some of the items for the Veterans Day celebration earlier before the council meeting. So for that day, you come, you could enjoy the food, you get the free haircut, you get to talk to some of the board, talk about the resources available for you. It's a long list, so, but yeah, we'll come, and it's gonna be at the Lamperson on Magnolia and Lampson Corner there. So if you need more information, let me know. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, staff and the public who came, and as well as everyone on council and honorable mayor, to afford everyone voice. Everybody has been heard. We don't need to stay here till midnight, we only need to stay here another 10, 15 minutes to wrap this up. There's a time and a place for everything. This is not the end all, be all. This is not everything all at once. This is something. It's a good start. I'm directing staff to put into action. This is not a resolution without any implementation. This resolution shall be implemented with concrete action to deliver on our promises. I am putting a timeline on it, as much as practical. By the end of this year, I want to see an information resource hub with properly vetted information. And if our attorney can help us with a disclaimer, we are not advertising for anybody, we're not endorsing any organization, or person, or services, or goods. We are simply providing information as a service to our community, our residents, who has overwhelmingly asked for these services even at their expense. That's what we're here to do. So please make it happen. I did talk to our IT Information Technology Director earlier this evening. He is standing by, ready to implement our directive. Make it happen by the end of the year. That is my request. This is not a resolution without bite. It will have bite. The people voted for it, the people supported it, who spoke up for it, will be holding That's how I'm gonna end tonight. Each one of you have spoken, and we have two members left, and I yield my time. Thank you and good night.
Councilwoman?
Good evening, everyone. I just want to thank everybody to who came out to speak. It takes a lot of courage, and, and it really, it's, it's one voice, one voice that matters, is our community's voice, our diverse voice, who we should represent. And I, I am very proud of my fellow councilmembers for supporting this resolution. And first, I want to thank all those who came out tonight, sorry. Government is more, is more, government is more responsive and efficient when the residents play, play a part. Earlier this month, I attended Dia de los Muertos event at Steel Craft. It was a wonderful celebration of our rich Mexican traditions and heritage. Families enjoyed performances, arts and crafts, a car show, and great company. Thank you to the knitting committee for organizing such a beautiful event. I am already looking forward to the next year's event. As we all know, last week was Election Day, and many of our residents were out exercising their right to vote. I want to address a concern I noticed at the, at the West Haven Park voting site. Unfortunately, several voters were unable to cast their ballots due to long wait times and limited parking. After receiving message from residents and my dis, in my district, I went to observe the situation myself, and I saw some frustrated voters leave before voting. Ariana was also present and witnessed the same. While I appreciate the county's strong efforts and procedures, I'd like our staff to communicate these issues with them so that we can explore alternative voting locations for District Five and District Six in the future. I want to give a quick shout out to the, a local Garden Grove-based run club, Mother Runners. It is a wonderful community of moms who run, connect, and such, support each other. They're hosting a run on Saturday, November 22nd at 8:00 a.m. Meeting at Gar, uh, Mornings Coffee Garden Grove. We will start with a short run, followed by coffee and conversations at, at Mornings. I'll be there too. Come and join us for some miles, coffee, and great communication and company. Yesterday was Veterans Day, and with that, I want to acknowledge all of our Garden Grove employees and residents who have served in our armed forces. I want to give a shout out to my niece, Specialist Saldivar. Her hus, her and her husband, Sergeant Montez, were both recently complete, uh, whom both recently completed service with the Army in the 82nd Airborne Division. Thank you for your service. Lastly, I hope everyone has, has a great Thanksgiving week and enjoys, enjoy some time of reflection and comfort amongst loved ones. Thank you.
Hello, everyone. Before I get started with some more formal business, I, I want to, again, thank everyone that's taken the time to come and speak to us over the last several months. I'm particularly moved by the advocacy of the young people in our community over the last several months. I, I want us to have like no misunderstanding here that this is a community-driven effort, that it's our residents that are asking for this, that have been asking for this. And the harsh and honest reality of a lot of this, guys, is that the reason that there's so many young people leading this movement is because it's so many of our parents and our elders that are on the line. We are here not just because we represent us and a community of people that look like us, we represent the people in our family, at our churches, at our schools, that have the most at stake and the most to lose, and that's why they can't be here the way that these young people have been able to come and consistently show up. I've been so incredibly moved because one, once upon a time, I was you guys sitting back there. And there was once a time where there were people that were sitting in these seats that listened to the things that I had to say and looked at me and said that there's no way that this is someone from our community. But proof's in the pudding, because I'm here now. And I want you all to know that you all have the capacity to be leaders, whether you're an elected official or not, whether you hold a position in an organization or not. You have all taken the first step to advocating for your community, to standing up for what's right, for your neighbors, for your friends, and for your family. And I am 100% proud of you, because I never, in my wildest dreams, as a teenager, sitting in those seats, what I have thought that I would see, the kind of community groundswell that I've been able to see from you guys in the last several months, and I'm incredibly and deeply moved, and I hope that this is not the last time that we see so many of you guys here, and that you continue to do the work for our community that we need, because this is just the tip of the iceberg. We're seeing a lot of issues in these turbulent times, and we need to rely on one another more than ever. And I know we've heard a lot of criticism, I've gotten a lot of criticism, a lot of very colorful comments online and, and in person as well, and that's expected, this is, we're elected officials, and we're gonna have criticism, and we're gonna have people happy with us sometimes, you know, it is what it is. But I do want you guys all to understand that every person that is on this dais is here because they do care about their community. They do represent a constituency, they, they're, they're doing their best to advocate for the people that elected them, and they also have valid concerns. And I want to make sure that I acknowledge the fact that Councilmember Tran and Mayor Klaufenstein are taking steps to do work to try and help our community by providing that legal aid, that free legal aid clinic. So I hope that they'll, you know, keep us in the loop about that, so we can also share that with our residents. It's important for us to be able to do things collectively and also individually, so I want to make sure that I commend them for the things that they've done. And I hope that we're all gonna continue being able to do more things for this community, because the need right now is so diverse and so much. To that effect, I also want to acknowledge Veterans Day in particular, I want to shout out my cousin Alberta Destegui, because he did a couple of tours of duty, and he served his country in the Air Force, and he's gar, he's a Garden Grove kid, but now, you know, he's out in, in Henderson, because he has to be over by the base over there, and I do miss him and his family terribly. But I'm, I'm really proud of him and grateful for his service. Furthermore, I also want to make sure that I thank the knitting committee, Charlene Quejar, for holding a beautiful Dia de los Muertos event. As Councilmember Munyon expressed, you know, we were there, it was such a wonderful opportunity to see just folks really engaging with, with the culture in a beautiful and meaningful way, and I hope that we would be able to, to spotlight the work of the, all the folks that took part in this event, hopefully at a future meeting, because it was Charlene with the knitting committee, as well as the Brown Descents, and of course, with the help of Steel Craft as a host, and so many other members of the, of the community. So, thank you guys so much for doing that. It was so cool to see an event honoring our Hispanic community happening in Garden Grove. I've also had the opportunity to, to kind of shadow our traffic division in their installation of some rapid flashing beacon lights that they've been installing along Garden Grove Boulevard. Just this morning, I went and visited the latest one that they did. But I want to make sure that I specifically shout out our techs that produce these wonderful rapid flashing beacons in-house, like, they are so capable and amazing, and I got a message from our head of our traffic division, I want to make sure that I acknowledge these, these employees. So this is from our city traffic engineer, Juan Navarro. He says, Dear Councilwoman Aristegui, I wanted to share an update and express appreciation for the outstanding work completed by our traffic division signal electricians. Recently, our team assembled and installed the new rectangular rapid flashing beacons, RRFBs, at the intersection of Garden Grove and Lemonwood and Garden Grove and Safford. This project was successfully completed by our dedicated signal electricians, Jose Vasquez and Shan Lewis, who have served the city for 18 and 17 years respectively. In addition to their work on RRFB installations, Jose and Shan are responsible for maintaining nearly 150 traffic signals and over 500 streetlights citywide. They are both highly skilled, proactive, take great pride in ensuring the safety and satisfaction of our residents. Their commitment to excellence and their responsiveness to community needs makes them invaluable members to our engineering division. We're truly fortunate to have them on our team. Thank you for your continued support as we work to improve traffic safety and reliability throughout the city. We have some of the most amazing staff here in the city of Garden Grove, and our Public Works Division specifically does so much with what we're able to give them, and they were able to, to go and address the needs in our community. So thank you so much to Shan and Jose, because the work that you guys did is gonna be helping us keep our residents safe. Yay! Okay, and that was all for me. Thank you, guys.
Thank you. I just have a couple of things that I'd like to make mention of. First off, this past Saturday, Board of Supervisors Chairman Doug Chafee, as well as Supervisors Sarmiento and Janet Nguyen, with myself and Chief Alfara, and the Garden Grove Police Department, had a gun buyback here in Garden Grove, right here at our CMC. It was an all-day event, people could anonymously bring their guns that they no longer wanted to the CMC, our police officers were able to take that, there was monetary gift cards given depending upon what of value the gun was, whether it was an assault weapon or just a handgun. We were able to take in over 300 guns during the buyback event, yes. And so we had a press release at the end of the event where we were able to just share the success of the day. But most importantly, I want to thank the Garden Grove Police Department under the leadership of Emir Alfara. It takes time to plan an event of this size and scale, especially something that's countywide being hosted here in Garden Grove. It was so well organized, logistics went off without a hitch, the Board of Supervisors were so impressed with just the leadership as a whole. So again, thank you to the chief, and thank you to our police department for all the effort that it takes to, to put on an event of this caliber and this scope. And we have quite a few assault rifles and dangerous weapons off the streets here in our county and in Garden Grove, so it was a, it was a very successful event. I also, before our next council meeting, we will see Thanksgiving go by, as we mentioned now, and also our Winter in the Grove. So the city invites everyone to celebrate this holiday season at Winter in the Grove. That's our big community tree lighting event, it will be December 6th from 3:00 to 7:00 p.m. in our Village Green, which is located at 12732 Main Street. You can experience festive lights and sounds and festivities, we have Snowtopia, unlimited snow slides, carnival games, holiday photo areas, live entertainment, and more. And don't forget, we also have a holiday craft boutique, so it's a great way to get a jumpstart on your holiday shopping. Lots of local crafters and handmade goods will be available for the community at this event. For more information, you can go to GGCity.org/WinterInTheGrove. And finally, I also want to mention our vets, we celebrated Veterans Day, I want to thank Cindy, and if George was here, thank him as well for their service and our military. We had a beautiful impromptu ceremony, again, thank you to Councilwoman Cindy Tran for helping to organize that, it's wonderful to be able to highlight and really put a face to the veterans that are in, right here in our local community, so that was beautiful. I've never seen a cake cut with a sword before, so that was a first, it was pretty cool. And so we pa- And so we pause to honor the service and sacrifice and steadfast commitment of those who wore a nation's uniform. To every city employee who is a veteran, thank you. Your courage and dedication continue to strengthen our organization and the community that we serve. Garden Grove TV3 released a video on Veterans Day. I'm sure many of you saw it. I know I sure highlighted it and shared it, spotlighting Garden Grove veterans from different branches of the U.S. Armed Forces. So if you have an opportunity, please watch the video and maybe comment with some just shared support or gratitude. I want to thank our PIO, Jonathan Garcia, and again, our TV3, incredible work putting that together, so heartfelt, and I know it meant a great deal not only to our veteran community, but to all of us as residents here in Garden Grove. If you are a veteran, or if you have family members currently serving, know that our city stands with you, and that we are so proud to work alongside you and grateful for the example that you set each and every day. To all veterans across Garden Grove, thank you so much for your service. May this Veterans Day be just a reminder of our enduring commitment to honor you, not just on Veterans Day or this week, but always. So with that, in my remarks, and I'll turn it over to our city manager.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the city council. I do appreciate all the feedback today, and we'll definitely follow up, so nothing else. Thank you.
City Attorney?
Yes, Mayor. We did have two closed session items earlier this evening, and there's no reportable action out of that one, and that's all I have. Thank you.
Very good, and with that, we stand adjourned.